The city of Lamarck, the great city of Lamarck, behind the police and the fire departments. You get a lot of these, so I'm gonna give this to you. It's not because of the firefighter brother.
Thank you, Mayor.
Did y'all want to be any, anyone?
You know, I will say this, that, um, you know, and it happened a lot, three years ago, when we started, uh, negotiations, three years ago, uh, the city took a, a hard look at the mental health of first responders with, between both unions and both, both departments. So, um, we've made great strides in.
It's not, it's not because of.
We have made great strides in getting past the stigma of just lay your bootstraps up and go back to work. It's, uh, we've come a long way and, and we've still got a long way to go in both unions and the city is definitely, um, made strides towards that. So we're, we're definitely working in a better place. The city is definitely supporting our firefighters and our paramedics and police officers, one hundred percent there. I mean, my guys, okay, thank y'all enough for the support and the citizens. That's, we're here for you guys. So that's, that's what we're here to do and that's to take care of you guys and, and back up our police brothers as well.
Yeah, and I would say, uh, I visited the agency of workforce. And I got out here, um, four, four officers I've worked with who committed suicide. It's been very loud, one of the, president's lost treasure. I want to play it on the table, put them on the light, yeah. Well, that's like, and keep it up. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Absolutely. National Library Week. If you are a librarian, you ought to just come forward. There's not that many of them. I brag all the time on the library. I brag all the time on Mrs. Amy Miller, who I think is one of the, uh, most effective department heads that I've seen, uh, in our great city, uh, very organized, uh, very thoughtful, very considerate. And so, uh, with great pride, I believe I can say this, not only about myself as mayor, but the rest of the council, with great pride, yes, yes?
Yes.
All right. We, uh, we read this proclamation, uh, and award it to our great library staff, because Amy will tell us, it's not just me, but it's definitely those that served with me. Office of the Mayor for the City of Lamarck proclamation. Whereas libraries spark creativity, fuel imagination, uh, and inspire lifelong learning. Offer a space where individuals of all ages can explore new ideas and be drawn to new possibilities. Whereas libraries serve as a vibrant community hub, connecting people with knowledge, technology and resources while fostering civic engagement, critical thinking and lifelong learning. Whereas libraries provide free and equitable access to books, digital tools, innovative programming, ensuring that all individuals, regardless of background, have the support they need to learn, connect and thrive. Whereas libraries protect the right to read, to think, to explore without censorship, standing as champions of intellectual freedom and free expression. Whereas dedicated librarians and library workers provide welcoming spaces that inspire discover, discovery, collaboration and creativity for all by providing services that include partnering with schools, businesses and other organizations to help maximize resources, provide opportunities for people of all ages to continuously learn through storytime, steam programs and literacy initiatives. Whereas libraries, librarians and library workers across the country are joining together to celebrate National Library Week under the theme Drawn to the Library. Now therefore, we, the mayor and city council, by virtue of the authority vested by the City of Lamarck, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of April sixth through twelfth, twenty twenty five, as National Library Week. And the City of Lamarck and do hereby urge everyone in the community to celebrate and utilize the wonderful resources available at the public, Lamarck Public Library. Testimony whereof, witness my hand, the seal of the City of Lamarck. This twenty first day of March, twenty twenty five, Keith Bell, Mayor, let's give the Lamarck Public Library and its staff a round of applause. Ms. Miller.
We are proud to accept this proclamation. Um, and like Mayor said, I, I don't do it alone by any stretch. I've got a wonderful staff. I've got, uh, Sarah Patina here, who's our youth services coordinator. Um, we reorganized our, um, our staff a couple of years ago and, um, Sarah is, is focused not only on programs in the library, but also with other departments, working with them, working with our schools. She's done a tremendous job in getting our numbers up and, um, we're seeing the fruits of, of their labor. Her and Tom and Princess as well. If you haven't been to the library lately, please stop by and see us. We'll be happy to show you around. We're more than just books. We have really been trying to position ourselves as that intersection for social services in our community. So we're definitely more than just books. We can help connect you with the resources and services that are available, maybe not with us, but we'll get you the answers and get you connected elsewhere. So, thank you.
Hey, we are at item five, five, yes, five. Citizens' participation, limited to three minutes per person. Comments from the public will be heard at this time. Any person with city-related business who signed up may speak to council, limited to three minutes. If wishing to speak, give the mayor your name, the mayor or the presiding officer your full legal name, address and item you wish to speak about. Plots with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city may not deliberate on comments. Personal attacks will not be allowed. Personnel matters should be addressed to the city manager during normal business hours. Press six to, star six to mute or unmute yourself. If you're participating via telephone, if you're participating via the Zoom platform on a smartphone, tablet or computer, there should be a microphone, lower portion of your screen, uh, to mute and unmute yourself. If you are participating with us person, uh, when your name is called, you may approach the podium to the center aisle, uh, and you will have three minutes. Uh, and there is our clock. Avery, are there, are there any persons online wishing to speak? We have one. Welcome. Name and address, please.
It's Harvey Freebird. Can you hear me?
Person, uh, when your name is called, you may approach the podium to the center aisle, uh, and you will have.
Can you hear us?
Hello.
Hello, welcome. Name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is Harvey Freebird. I live in Joseph Lowery's Head, rent free.
Welcome.
I want to, uh, thank you, Mayor. I want to speak on the over policing that's going on in Lamarck, particularly on Highway seventeen fifty seven, Bayou Road, Lake Road and Cedar Road. Um, I heard Councilwoman Yancy recently expressed a desire for less policing on those streets. And then Councilman Lowery, on the other hand, started whining and asking for more police, saying it's a high crime area. That's no surprise to me. Councilman Lowery is for big government. He's a bootlicker who thinks police can do no wrong. So I decided to visit these areas with my camera and observe. I do not ever interfere with police work. I only do what is protected under the First Amendment. I record, I assemble, I speak and I protest if I feel the need to. Contrary to Councilman Lowery's false claims, I have never interfered with police duties. He has accused me of interfering, yet he has never shown any proof, because there is no proof. On my first visit to this area, I recorded seven traffic stops in less than two hours and then I was pulled over by a Texas City Police Officer in Lamarck. He falsely cla- claimed my tag was expired. Since then, every time I return to that area, it's like the difference between night and day. Sometimes I don't see a single traffic stop, much less the heavy-handed police presence that Councilman Lowery insisted is necessary. Now, if the police measure crime by the number of arrests and arrests have dramatically dropped when I'm present, then by their own logic, I have reduced crime in that area, single-handedly, and you're all welcome. In reality, my presence and the presence of a camera has simply bought accountability to that neighborhood. That's the power of transparency and accountability. I will continue to document and hold public servants accountable because the citizens are tired of being harassed and terrorized by the police in that area. I'll close with this. My presence in that area by recording police has achieved the wishes of Councilman Yancy by reducing the traffic stops, and it has also achieved the wishes of Councilman Lowery to reduce the crime rate. Y'all are both welcome. I will continue to help the city reduce crime and reduce traffic stops. And if the council would like to recognize me and give me a wo- an award, like I always see them doing at the beginning of the meetings, just give me an email, Mayor, and let me know when to come down there and I'll be glad to come and accept the award. Thank you, Councilman Mayor. I'll see y'all later.
Thank you. Thank you, Harvey. Mrs. Melanie Stowe, welcome, Ms. Melanie. Name and address for the record, please.
Melanie Stowe, thirteen oh one Red Bed Lane, Lamarck. I've had the pleasure of working with every member of the council, such as Mr. Lowery, Mr. Compton. I've worked with Miss Yancy as her capacity as a teacher, as well as a councilmember, Mr. Ross, as well as a councilmember, and you, Mr. Bellas, Mayor. Had to write this. Sorry. I stand here, I'm speaking with you today because the business of the people is not being conducted in satisfactory manner. The council squandered the people's time due to the fact that our city representatives are behaving in a manner reminiscent of spoiled children. You're not adversaries, you're not rivals. As citizen, as a citizen, I'm not concerned with any political affiliation that you may have. Your job is to conduct our business here in the city. That's whether it's ensuring proper maintenance of our infrastructure, controlling crime and working with efficiency. Unfortunately, this is not currently the case. A prime example of this efficiency, this inefficiency is the pile of tree debris that has been sitting in front of my home since August of twenty twenty four, from Hurricane Barrel. Now, we had that tree debris out after the first sweep, but in time for the second sweep. I have contacted my councilmember. I have spoken with the city manager and would assure that the issue would be addressed, yet nothing was done. I reached out to the new city manager, leaving messages on his voicemail and with city hall staff, only to be met with silence. I was eventually instructed to contact Public Works, who informed me that the issue was the homeowner's responsibility. This response only was forthcoming because I made the call back to City Public Works. I contacted the city manager once more and I had the fortunate, had been unfortunate enough to speak with him directly and he assured me that he would investigate the matter. Several city managers or several city representatives have since visited the home, taken pictures. The debris pile had been red-tagged twice. Two weeks following my last call to the city manager, a minimal effort was made to address the issue. I remain uncertain as whether the remaining pile of debris would be picked up. This is a prime example of the inefficiency that we, as citizens of Lamarck, are forced to endure. It has taken me nine months to get this debris pile addressed, despite following instructions provided. The inefficiency of the city is one of the reasons why I'm running for district lead.
Thank you. Item six. Presentations. Human Resources Software. Is that you, Ms. Michaela? That is you. Welcome. You have a very friendly young man behind you.
I do, um, and this is Gary. He is with, um, GovernmentJobs.com doing business as NeoGov. Um, and he is going to be leading this presentation, just to give you guys a little bit of information on, uh, the platform, um, that you guys will be deciding on later tonight.
Very good. Did you say your, his name was Gary? Gary, welcome, Gary.
Thank you, Mayor Bell. Councilmembers, the manager, man clerk.
I'm sorry, Gary, can I get your last name?
Yes, Gary Clary. It does rhyme, C-A-R-D-Y.
Gary, Gary. All right, Mr. Gary, too.
So, thank you all for allowing us to be up here. It has been a pleasure having my team work with, uh, Michaela's team, um, over the past couple of months as we go through the RFP process. Um, and I believe if we can advance the next slide, I'll make it easy. And it's not done by PowerPoint. I've just got a few slides here to help with the numbers. So, um, a little bit on the NeoGov piece. Um, as Michaela chaired, uh, we started out as GovernmentJobs.com, uh, actually twenty-five years ago. Um, we've actually morphed over time, uh, through acquisitions and, uh, new growth, um, uh, opportunities within the company, uh, to actually, uh, as we get into the coming pages, uh, quite a depth of software from an employee lifecycle from hire to retire, and that includes the recruiting aspect of it. What makes us unique is, as you look at the two columns there of where it says NeoGov serves, we are only a public sector company. We are, I would modestly say, the public sector company, and then we focus just there. We don't get into nonprofits, we don't get into the private sector. Um, we have, um, a lot of repair law enforcement with us. We have people like me. I also serve as a mayor up in the state of Michigan, up in twenty-five thousand person city. Um, and I missed my council meeting tonight, so.
Oh.
So, that being said, you have, um, that we have, uh, the public sector side of it, and then we also have the education side. Um, and I could tell you as, not only as a mayor myself, as the dad of two police officers up in the West Michigan area, um, this software is very specific for, um, solving a lot of problems, solving a lot of government inefficiencies and so forth from that. So, from that, um, a little bit of who we are in the greater Houston area. Um, I know that when I look at it, just like from a county perspective, Galveston County, um, Harris County, um, are two customers. You can see all the dots up there for different uh, products and services. Um, and then we have, um, right, you know, closer hooked to home here, uh, Dickinson, Lee, Deer Park, um, you can go on and on and you can see all the dots up there. But we are a very reputable company in the area and, um, uh, the service is right locally. So, our proposed solution, we'll jump to the next one. You'll see this employee lifecycle. This is just for the state local government software, um, side of it. This is not the public safety side where we have a lot more robust offerings, um, things with mental health with officers, firefighters, anybody with public safety, um, complex timekeeping methods and so forth. So you'll see here, what's being proposed with, uh, has come out of this, uh, RFP process is, um, we actually are able to touch in every step. We are recruit, develop, um, from compliance and then we HR information systems. We're touching all of these, um, with the recommended solution, uh, because we've identified problems that we can bring these, uh, solutions back to. The only two items up here that we don't have as part of our recommended solution tonight is policy, is policy management and schedule. Those tend to be a little bit more on the public safety sides of things and we've not, uh, jumped into that water yet with you all. But the rest of this we are solving and right now, when you look at how you're doing it right now, it's a number of different systems. They're siloed, um, they just, they don't talk with one another. And when we talk about trying to get data-driven information, um, you can't do it with this. So common challenges, we heard, this is specific to Lamarck. Um, the first is, when you look at, they don't support the unique needs of the public sector. Again, I'm speaking from experience, unique doesn't do service to the complexities that we have in the public sector, um, whether that's time, timekeeping, um, scheduling, what have you. Because it works in the private, doesn't mean it works in public. So that's why we're up here, because this is, we're good at what we do here. Right below that, enter employee information, then you have siloed information right now. You can't get no signers to talk to one another and it's really important because you can't make data-driven decisions when you're only dealing with part of the equation. It's asking the city council up here to make decisions and we're giving you part of the agenda. And that's, that's impossible to do. You have to have the whole story there. Payroll benefits question upper right, that's self-service, um, empower your employees to be able to do things themselves. Um, allows, also frees up staff to be able to work on strategic, uh, things, not get bogged down in tactical day-to-day details. And then the last one is the payroll processes, um, they're complex, prone to errors. You're also sunsetting your current solution, um, which is, I, I know that you just made the decision in January to go with OpenGov. They do not have a payroll module. They do not do HRIS. Um, our system, you'll see in a second, talks with all of this, so we're breaking it down those silos again, and that data is flowing actually in between. So, how we're going to help here, works with the GL, stepping into this next piece is, um, you, you selected, uh, OpenGov, you see that bottom right there, where we help you out here, that information's actually able to go back and forth there. We are a system agnostic, uh, firm, so that doesn't have to be, um, OpenGov or another vendor. We've worked with pretty much everybody, um, that works in this space. Um, however, we do have success with OpenGov, which is great, and one of the reasons that Michaela and our team selected us. And then next is, uh, just a few of the highlights, be a top employer. You know, the public sector's had to compete like never before for talent. I think even, uh, my dad retired as a city manager, so I've grown up fifty-seven years. I've been around local government. And when I bring this up, it used to be you started in city government, state government, and you didn't leave. You stayed there and it was easy to get people. There's a waiting list for police officers, firefighters. It's not the case anymore. So you have to be competitive in all aspects. Those hit the first two buckets there. Operate it more efficiently. Um, this can also equate to cost savings over time, because you can realize you're paying for things you don't need or you're eliminating extra processes that take time and money. And then the database, uh, decisions at the end is really process efficiencies, cost efficiencies. We keep going down the list. Those are going to be things that we solve for you. And then jumping specifically to the HRIS piece, um, this is really, I think, where we hit home the hardest is, um, and we're the most unique, is that employee lifecycle, getting, touching all the different things. If you think back to that, uh, that slide and then, um, all those problems that we solved, even from a recruiting aspect, um, you might have, um, chiefs speaking, some different police officers or, uh, chief, uh, fire chiefs speaking to firefighters you're trying to recruit in here. Who's got the latest updates with this? Who's done the background investigations? And you're just, all that stuff's in one place. Everybody has visibility to it that needs to, and you can see there. Um, I'll come back to this, the totally address piece. All this ties around payroll, HRIS right now, which are disparate systems for you. And then really that was, I promised we'd be left in five minutes, a little high overview, but I'm able to answer any question that you have for us. I understand this is a, our piece and understand the process you've gone through, uh, for that. Um, so it sounds like you've, you've, you've committed to that piece with OpenGov and so forth, um, with the integration. That's the biggest thing we're bringing to the table here, being able to connect with what you've switched to from the RFP provider. So we're going to make this, um, easy for you. We're going to make sure if people get paid, because pretty quickly, you're not going to have a payroll system, nothing wrong. And so this is what we're bringing to the table for you. My understanding is this has already been budgeted and, uh, proof so like there's, there's not, not much of an ask, it's more informational. Um, but any questions I can answer for, uh, uh, for the council.
Let's get, Michaela, can you just give a, read us in, for those of us that are just hearing this presentation, what was the need for this type of software?
Yes, sir. So this started really with, uh, STW being shut down. So we, um, STW currently does all of our payroll, all of our financials, our requisitions, things of that nature. And so when we put out, uh, the original request for proposals, um, for what ultimately led to OpenGov, it had included in it a HRIS payroll piece. Um, but unfortunately, um, going through the RFP process and everything else, um, the system that was selected didn't have that piece, um, because it's, it's really hard to get a system that kind of has everything. Um, so we put out a separate RFP for just HR and payroll that specifically would work with OpenGov so that we could still pay our people, but also have a system that's robust enough to continue, uh, personnel operations and kind of the interior stuff. Um, you know, uh, you have your people that are working on the streets and everything else, but I've got to take care of the people. So this is, this is how we, we came to NeoGov, um, and specifically the fact that they, um, they, they work very well with OpenGov. So it would be, instead of us having to go from this system to that system, this system, it, it really integrates us more.
Very good. Thank you. Council, we're going to open this up for questions. Sounds like we had a previous software program that handled a lot of things, uh, among them would be payroll and our payroll processing. We are moving away from that software system, which necessitates the need for a new system, which is why Mr. Gary Clary is here.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Council, any questions?
So I do have a question.
Miss Yancy, did you want to? Okay, Miss Yancy, then, Mayor Proton.
So, so you're saying that the system that, that we spent almost eight hundred thousand dollars on will integrate with this system? Yes, ma'am. It'll, it'll speak to each other. It'll, it'll speak to each other.
Yes, ma'am. So open gov is heavy on, you know, the permits, the financials, things of that nature, but it doesn't have the personnel piece. Neo Gov specializes in the personnel.
So and the cost, this is coming from our offer, offer funds. It's about three hundred thousand. I can't get it up. Okay. Okay. And so it, it will make the processes better.
Yes.
And it'll save us time and money.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Just as a history portion, the reason why they were sectioned off was because of all the money that was sectioned off from ARPA to be utilized. For software upgrades that the city of Lamarck desperately needed. I think the difference is, is when you talk about. The amounts of money that we passed for the other software, open gov. Is that encompasses software that the city of Lamarck does not currently use for its operations. So to say that money is just a replacement of a portion of what STW did in the past. Would not be accurate because it does five other departments on top of what STW did. Uh, the difference is, is STW again to Michaela's point. Uh, it doesn't handle the payroll piece. And we knew that the amount of ARPA money that this council set aside, uh, months back. Allocated for all of this. So we knew that we, that open gov. If was going to be the choice for financial software. That that had to come in at X number of dollars because we, we still needed Y number of dollars. In order to fund the, the, the payroll and HR section of our software needs.
Gotcha.
And what is the lifespan of your software? Making last.
Twenty five years and running right now. It's a great question.
Uh, this contract that we present is three years.
Three years. Okay. Thank you.
You done a chance, Mayor Proton?
I'll just tag on to. Yeah, Councilwoman Yancy's last question. It's three years, but there's an annual. Uh, fee on the, on the software. Is, what's the annual fee?
The, uh, varies. If you look at the agenda item for tonight, I believe it's under. New business, um, there's a breakdown for the three years. Um, we have worked out to where year one includes all of the, um, implementation fees. Year two actually has a discount on it. So the year three price would most likely be the most accurate one.
Yes.
But I don't have that number off the top of my head.
You don't have the year three number?
It's in, it's in.
It's in the.
Documentation.
When we get to it, it'll be there.
Under eight four. Yes, sir. Yes.
Because I, I was looking at that earlier and I didn't really. It's a bit confusing. Uh, when I look at the amounts. I, I perk up, you know, it's one of these little. Kind of a bull with a red flag. And I see, when I see some big expenditure like this, two things to remember. We have an initial reporting requirement. Uh, in April under for the ARPA funds. I'm surprised I don't see Grant Works here. Uh, their responsibility is to keep us. Uh, appraised of these things and I don't want to miss those deadlines. So, uh, Mr. City Manager, interim city manager, uh, that's there. It's a requirement. Otherwise we lose the funding.
Correct.
I want to make that very clear. Uh, number two, the issue on these. This, um, coordination of the software is not so much the bigger picture, which is paying our, 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 our staff. Number one priority, everybody should get their fair wages. It becomes on the, on this side, this side here, sitting here is the issues that arise. With the request for open records, public information acts. That's where this city has had some difficulties. Uh, that's to say, uh, personal information has been, has been released. That is, that is not appropriate. Some of that, and, and, uh, working with our city attorney. Uh, in terms of, as I'm reviewing applications and of it, sitting with the city secretary and. Both of them this week, they're aware of these issues and we're going to be, I'm going to be discussing them with council. But that's where I want to know that we're going to be able to satisfy certain privacy considerations. If a, a person like an employee says, I don't want my personal information released. Uh, correct, like my home address and things of this nature. I, I want privacy above all else. Uh, as long as it's, uh, and that's permitted under sections of the government code for mistaken Gus, uh, on that side. So. I, I want to, um, so my question is that your system provides that sort of, um. Flexibility and, uh, to us. Correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, so Mayor Proton, the, um, with, with one of the biggest strengths we have. Um, with our software is the ability to do custom reporting and analytics. That custom reporting, if I want to build a report, anything that, that might be tracked in that software, it could be favorite chocolate flavor, it could be favorite color. Something to do that you recognize birthdays and anniversaries and things of that. I can build those custom reports in a matter of literally of seconds. And once they're built, they're there for the future. I can automatically have them sent to me. But I can actually reject, redact that information out of there. It could be social or it could be address. It could be how many people are on the benefits plan. Uh, I mean, there's different things that really from a, um, a female information act. That, you know, that they don't, that we need to have. But there's other things that you do need to provide because it's going to ask and there's not a good case not to. So yes, the ability to build that custom report, um. Somebody with my IQ level can build a, uh, staff can do really well.
And, and we're going to have a dedicated, uh, accessible person. Or staff person with your company that, that our individuals can reach out to.
And the neat thing with that is I promise not to take her anytime soon anyway. We have a lot of former customers that have started work because they love the software so much. Um, one of the things I left out in a couple of my comments was we do quarterly updates that are included. There are no additional costs. Um, they're just their enhancements to the software. Any given quarter, half to two thirds of those software, I mean, uh, enhancements are from customer suggestions. That is how, there is not a software company on the planet that can put, uh, that statement behind their product and do it consistently. And we do. Because we rely on the mechanics of the world to help tell us, uh, to make it better. So there's user group communities, um, our ability to, we have conferences where the customers come together. But having that accessibility to the customer service team, in the worst case is they're reaching out to us and say, hey, I really have something pressed. Can you help? Make sure we're taken care of.
Good. Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Gary.
Mr. Carey.
Carey. Uh, but I, but I, but I call people Miss Michaela and sometimes I use first name. Mayor Carey, how about that? So when we are looking at the, uh, the four. Uh, the four standard services recruit, develop, comply and HRIS. Um, you're speaking to the idea that you all would be a database. For these, uh, these categories. You're not suggesting to us, and this is just information purposes only, you're not suggesting to us that you are going to provide training for our. Uh, meter readers or our street maintenance team. What it sounds like you're saying is this will be a system that when they are trained. If these, uh, training opportunities are uploaded, they would be kept. Uh, as far as record keeping, uh, and report making. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I think that's one of the biggest pluses from the learning management system. Um, and if I rewind back a little bit to, you made a decision to go with open gov and that, that, I, I call it ERP, but that enterprise resource. Uh, planning tool. Um, we made a decision a long time goes a company. We've stayed steadfast, but that is. We don't want to try and be everything. Remember back to that slide that had public and, uh, private sector software up there. We're not trying to be okay or average at a whole lot of things. We want to be good to great, um, over here at just the public sector. So the ERP piece is so complex, you know, whether it's utility software, uh, metering software, uh, tax billing, whatever it is. There's a lot of complexities there. That's not what we're, so we're going to, but we want to be able to leverage where you need that help. For that information and talk with one another, not have silent information. There are things within the financial system that you may need, um, you want to have that show on payroll at some point in time. These could be learning development opportunities that are assigned differently by department heads. Um, and really know one of the neat things too is the, um, uh, security permissions. They can be role based. They can be person based as well. On who has what access to be able to assign things out. So really it's a robust solution. I think to, uh. Um, submitted city manager's point earlier, this is not something you had. You don't have all of this stuff right now. This is. You're filling some, some much needed gaps, particularly in that payroll HRS side that are going away. Um, but you're going to be from an enhancement perspective for your employees and for the community here. You're going to be doing a lot more for them. It will be that employer of, uh, of desire for the people here.
Um, along those lines, the, uh, under, underdeveloped, you have, you have training management and you have performance management. Again, you are collecting the finished evaluations. Uh, and align for their analyzation, uh, perhaps even, uh, their, their reporting. Uh, when necessary, you are not providing the framework or the infrastructure for. Um, for evaluation. You're simply collecting the data. Yes.
Um, we can actually work with Michael and actually build out how you want performance management to look.
Okay.
Uh, we actually now have an idea. We use our own software. Um, so from the performance management, learning management piece, um, I know that I assign my team. Um, I can assign them different things. We do our, our annual reviews in there. We do our quarterly touches in there. Um, and, but that's something that's unique to us and things that we're looking for with our core principles. That's things that we can actually. Embed, uh, the things with Lamarck, uh, in there that, that they desire to have in there as part of that.
Last question. The, the, uh, compliance pillar. The end of it, uh, the, the last bullet point, if you will, is recall. Uh, and it sounds like, uh, uh, recall sounds like policy retraining. How would we ascertain whether or not? We would need policy retraining? If that makes sense to you, like would, would like, like it, it, would there be? Uh, certain violations that, uh, that the database would keep track of and then analyze and then, um. Recommend to Michaela for us. We probably need more training in. Uh, wastewater treatment or whatever the case may be. Is that how, how it will work? Or again, is this just database?
Database, but there's analytics there that you can help drive and make decisions. So if I take James. People, you know, like on fire, Chief, things back there. So, um, imagine chief has a, um, doing a ride along with, um, one of his crews and. Uh, as he's out there with that, it's almost think of like flashcards. It's almost like a quiz. You're, you're refreshing. It's an ongoing learning opportunity. It could, that could be, um, that could be developmental. Quite frankly, it could also be a bit punitive if it was something that there's not going on, maybe all sexual harassment situation or otherwise. That you're able that we, uh, recall could actually be set up to address that, um, that's, that's specific need at that time. But be able to pull reports out of that and show how was that person doing or they're resting along. So if there's a performance management plan in place where, um, it's an ongoing issue, um, if they're not. Not meeting the standards and it's showing progress, um, you, you all have grounds at that point for making some, some easier decisions.
Okay. Okay, anyone else?
Probably Mayor Bell, I could probably go down a rabbit hole with capability.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
My nerd self is trying to keep those things.
No, I, no, I totally get you and we want to make sure that we keep this on a, on a level. Of this discussion on a kitchen table. You, you're mayor. You get what I'm saying. Kitchen table level. So because there are. Folks that'll, that'll be listening to this, if not now, later on to get the, you know, get what happened in the council and we want to. Keep this conversation, uh, at a place that it can easily be absorbed so that our, our community can, can think and then. Communicate to us the direction we should go. But I, I think that I got all of my questions answered. Anyone else?
Uh, since.
Mr. Ross.
Since we still have, have it coming up for first reading. Uh, I hope you'll still be here when we get to that point that way. Uh, cause I'm still looking for the actual dollars and cents. In the four hundred pages of, of it. So. I would like to speak about that when we get, when it comes back up.
Very good. Thank you, Michaela. Thank you, Mayor Carey. Item seven, old business. Items presented to the council for discussion and possible action, seven, one, city attorney services, setting a limit. On the number of hours an elected official can access the city attorney's services. Without council approval. Gus, I believe we started this discussion last, was it last meeting?
Yes, Mayor.
Last meeting?
Yes, and this is a follow up. Uh, I think it's two meetings ago, but this is a follow up, uh, what Councilwoman Yancy asked me for. Um, so what you all have is a breakdown, uh, since May of twenty twenty four. Of how much time I've spent responding to individual texts and emails and phone calls to each of you. The question is, uh, essentially. Uh, a- as I said the last time, when you all say something up here, council hears it. One-off questions, okay, but. It, the, my question to you all is, right now. The, I, the gatekeeper is myself in answering it and each of you individually. Deciding to call me or text me or email me. Is that? And that has yielded this. Is that something council is agreeable to or not? And if not. Some got, provide me, I would request some guidance so that I'm not just guessing.
Sure. Question, is this for one calendar year? How long is this?
Since May of twenty four.
May of twenty four.
Yes.
So Gus, I wanted to, before we open this up for a discussion, I wanted to. Share with the public, I believe it was sometime last summer. Uh, that you first had the discussion with me about this issue.
I don't remember when it came up, but I mean, I, I'll, I'll be honest with you, Mayor, uh, just in. Interim city manager Pritchett's time, he's grumped at me about my bills and the amount of them. And I understand it. I get it. And so.
We'll show up my staff, but yeah.
Well, but I, I get it. And so this is. He deals with his staff. And deals with, he supervises his staff and they. Have a system and, and how they choose to contact me, but. Th- this is me coming to you all and. Asking what you want. And, and again, as, as I said, not to belabor the point. But I, I recall Councilmember Ross asked about an ordinance review committee. At a council meeting, Councilwoman Yancy asked about historical district. At a council meeting. So those numbers are not included in this because that is something that is in the public that is said. I'm not. That.
Yeah.
Y'all have the opportunity to sign off there. So that's.
Yeah. So ultimately I, we are, uh, the professional services budget attributed to, uh, Mill Shirley is where we have been over budget.
I, I would defer to JB and to Christine on that. I don't know, but it's. The numbers are the numbers and I, and if y'all are okay with it, that's fine. I just don't want y'all to say, Gus, you never told us.
Sure.
So.
No, I got you. JB, did you want to add something today?
I, I was just going to make the clarification that I would have to check to see where we are as far as the calendar year. For legal services budget numbers. Uh, I, I don't, I can't say that we're over budget because we're just halfway through this calendar year, but I know. One of the things that is unfortunate is. Some of the problems and things that we're trying to tighten up, we just want to make sure, obviously before we go well over budget with some of these items that stack up rather quickly. Um, from a staff standpoint is, is kind of where we are.
Sure. Well, council, it looks like we are being asked to consider whether or not we want to, uh, put a cap on. Uh, the number of hours an elected official can access the city attorney's services, uh, without council approval. And we will open it up to first thoughts. Who wants to go first?
I'll go first. Uh, first thing I'd like is a breakdown of this. And, um. If you have somebody more engaged, that, that's not necessarily a bad thing.
Hey, cool.
But, uh, I, I've actually asked for records. It would help kind of give a better idea. And those have never been provided to me. I've been asking for several months. But, uh, that, that's his job. That's what he's there to do. And, uh. It looks like somebody is a lot more engaged and than others. So. I'm looking at it. Ross is completely checked out. Mary Bell's. At, you know, very low. I'm the highest. And I, I admit I'm probably the most engaged. So I don't see that as a bad thing. I think that is a good thing. And, uh. That's it. If, if I could get the, the records that I requested, so I could verify this data, that would be great.
I believe these are those records. Yes.
No, sir. No, I, I requested. No, sir. No, I I requested, uh, email, communication, text messages. That's been a couple of months. It was, uh, accidentally sent to a Olson, Olson Law Firm. It was sent to an A G, uh, but this has been been requested.
That wait, wait, whoa, 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 hold on, hold on, Mr. Lowry. It, do you need to fact check this?
What we need to do is. I I think what she is talking about is she's asking us to get back on the agenda.
This is all agenda.
No, it's not.
Sure is.
Mister Lowry, Mister Lowry, our legal attorney. Has advised us that we have moved off of the agenda and I'm going to enforce that. So what we can do is we can continue to talk about the things that he has presented us. Uh, and the, uh, whether or not we want to put a cap on, uh, our opportunities to engage the attorney. I will say, you're saying, Mr. Lowry, that you are the most engaged. And I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing.
And and the only thing I would, uh, not to interrupt you, Mayor, I would just say. What is before you all reflect my billings? There may, so. That may be privileged to the public is all.
Say that to us in a very plain way. Do not share this with anyone?
Correct. And the reason why is while I have attempted to be. I have attempted to, but to be not discreet, but respectful of that. Attorneys' bills generally are, or generally can contain privileged information. And when those bills are produced in public. They are redacted because, for example, let's say. Uh, Michaela, the new H R director, were to call me and I were to write. Discussion with Taylor regarding. A B C, whatever A B C is, that A B C is likely going to be privileged because we're discussing personnel issues. Um, but it's the facilitation of legal advice and the facilitation of legal advice is generally privileged, so.
I'd I'd also request a copy of this with redactions.
Okay. Did you want to, uh, jump in, Mayor Protim?
Uh, follow up on your, from Gus's comment. Just to be clear, Gus, we're not saying, you're not saying that the. This figure is privileged.
No, no.
So that this, this.
No, not that.
Public information.
Yeah, that's why.
But but referring to the details.
Yes.
Of of the bill.
Yeah.
And attorneys, now you're billing by what? By?
Tenth of an hour.
Tenth, tenth of an hour.
Tenth of an hour.
Tenth of an hour, so.
Yes.
So a minimum call to you, if I were to call you, would be point, point one.
Yes.
On that side. And, uh, which is, by the way, from up from, that's very good. And that's, it's exceptional. Most firms, a minimum of, uh, usually half an hour just for a call. And so others, it's a full hour. So I could say that. Now, um. I have some other observations here, but I was just following up on.
Yeah, no, I think Lowry, you were, you were, uh, moving, pursuing a line of questioning. Were you done?
Uh, I I just want to get a copy of this with redactions, so.
Okay.
It's public information.
Were you done after that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mayor Protim, did you want to jump in?
Well, this getting back to this, the whole issue.
The whole issue.
The whole issue.
Yes, sir.
Already, yeah, I can.
Okay.
So, um. Here's my challenge, and I I said this, I had reservations the first time. And and I went back and the gentleman, he's here, he calls himself a nerd, I guess. In this regard, I am too. Uh, I went back to billings from the city, or actually the budget from the cities. That was approved back beginning from twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. And, uh, and this has come up, by the way, in our last, uh, fiscal year budget discussion. For whatever reason. Categories of expenditures on the legal side are not just one line.
Yeah, and and I will say, Mayor Protim.
No, and and it's not.
No, no, not, not.
Yeah.
No, no, I I I would say though that one thing that the prior city manager that we discussed and has happened is. In the past, I I couldn't give you the exact day, but in within the past year, the bills have been broken out. More by departments. So now there's a developmental services.
Well, well, I I'm coming to that.
Okay, okay.
I'm coming to that.
Where you were, sorry, I didn't realize.
Yeah, no, no, I'm, as I said, I'm, it's all to the last approved budget. And so. So I say that because. As we begin our budget discussions, and I'll come back to this as well in there. We 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 need to see some consistency over time. We change up here. But I think that good practices are, we should have consistency in terms of categories. That what we see in twenty eighteen is something that we can compare in twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. And that's one item that I have not seen on these budgets that I've gone back to twenty eighteen. And I only went that back far because that's what my time could permitted me. I believe me, I want to go further, uh, but, um. So that's one thing. And having said that, then, while we're we're having budget discussions. I I said, I'm going to continue, uh, not being in favor. I think that we need to have an accurate. Picture of all billable hours on the legal side, right? Uh, before we're even capable, at that point, it's it's up to council in terms of what we set in terms of a budget. Here is our budget period. And if there's any subcategories or any subsections of that, then let's deal with it at that time. That's why I wouldn't be a favor of, uh, pursuing this. But certainly this information is something that should be made aware to the public. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I think this goes back to that issue of governing ourselves, that by charter we're supposed to. Um, when you look at the the total hours. Um, we we are not, it it is being abused. So I did the, um, the average of everyone's together. The average would be sixteen hours and fifty, you know, fifty five minutes, I guess. So I proposed maybe saying no more than twenty. Hours, but I guess the question becomes then, um, are we talking about twenty hours? Every six months? Are we talking about twenty hours for the fiscal year?
Ten months that that's being averaged out to right there.
That's ten months, okay. So I I I propose that we cap it at, uh, twenty hours beginning next budget year. We've already gone, some people have already gone over. And so, and I don't know if I can ask this question, if we can, to so the public will know what is.
That's, that's a lot of stuff.
Per hour. How much is it per hour?
Yeah, i- i- it it depends on whether it's a partner or associate working on it. Um, the rate is gonna be, um. The partner rate will be three hundred dollars an hour, which is a significantly reduced rate from my normal rate. And then I believe the associate rate is two fifty. I don't recall that off the top.
And but last year. Before the new contract, it was.
Two fifty, two fifty.
So. If you look at two fifty times the sixty six. Point two hours, I think, what it was when I did the math, it's sixteen thousand five hundred fifty dollars that. Uh, are billable hours if you just use the two fifty rate.
Right. Right. That, well, I say right, I I am not checking your math. Sorry. I can't do that in my head.
You there, Mr. Ross?
I'm still.
Yeah. And I think it is important, I mean, this is, this is a teachable moment, right? Um, when you, when you're, when you, when you have new county people. That you, that you understand, you have to be careful about.
And and and. I agree, and this is really a a budgetary and a and a fiscal.
Issue.
We're fiscal responsibility concern. And as I said. Before, it was just me making the decision. This is me trying to, in the public, ask you all, what? Do you want? So.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Yeah. Well, I think, uh, I've been around. You know, on on all sides of this, as as a staff member. As a reporter. Old defunct Gidra News Service. Shout out, rest in peace, Mr. Gidra. Remember, Mr. Gidra? I was a reporter with Mr. Gidra. Volunteer and elected official. And I think that. When you think about it, we have two council meetings a month. And if there are any legal questions, uh, from, uh, council members. Thirty minutes of a discussion, maybe an hour for each meeting. The mayor obviously has to go through the agenda, uh, with legal as well as with Ms. Nance and Mr. Pritchett. That's two hours a month. And then if there were were to be another legal issue, uh, that might be a third. Uh, three hours a month. I think Ms. Yancy says twenty hours a year. I can go with that. Uh, I don't have a problem, uh, because at the end of the day, uh, this is. A budget issue. We cannot arbitrarily, uh, continue to use our city attorney. Without understanding the cost that it is, uh, costing the taxpayer. At the end of the day. We can be as engaged as we want to be, but it it goes with a price tag. That price tag is laid at the feet. Of the great residents of this great city. I wish that I could talk to Gus all day. He's a funny guy. Discuss all sorts of issues in the city. Every, every department, watch this. Every department, every service, and every piece of infrastructure in our city. Can be a day long conversation with the city attorney. I've been around long enough to know. Even even the way that we repair potholes, I can talk to Gus about it for eight hours straight. But if we are going to be fiscally conservative. Fiscally responsible, we have to cap it. Uh, and I'm in favor of that, Ms. Yancy. Moving forward, I won't beat a dead horse. I think that we need to do, Ms. Stowe's admonition, we need to do the business of the people. Of this great city, uh, and not continue to beat a dead horse. Mister, uh, Campion, and then we will entertain a motion.
Yeah, I I need to.
You need to speak to Mister Mister Lowry and then Mister Campion. We're gonna put a three more minutes on this clock, Ms. Nance, and we're gonna be done. Thank you, Mister Lowry.
So I can tell you by just going over this, there's almost something on every page that's an inaccurate, uh, billing. So maybe what needs to happen is council. As a whole, needs to maybe look at these as well. Um, going over something that's on the agenda, uh, open records request are repaying him and Olson and Olson, because there's a ton of that stuff on here. And I know it went to Olson and Olson. So are we being billed by two law firms? Uh, but I could tell you a lot of this stuff is 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 inaccurate. So. I I would request a breakdown of this.
You got it. Okay. Gus Gus is keeping time. What were you saying, Mr. Lowry?
Uh, I I would request a breakdown of this. There's a lot of open record stuff on here. So are we billed, being billed by two law firms? I can tell you, if he's billing us, we're being billed by Olson and Olson too. And I can also tell you. That there's nobody up here on this dais that has spent more money in legal fees than me. So. I'm very aware of legal fees and I'm very aware of what they cost.
Very good. Thank you for that, Mister Lowry. Did you want to jump in? And then I I saw you, Mister Ross. So we're gonna, we're gonna make.
I I'm I'm still looking for an answer because I don't find it in our budget. We talk about being. You know, um. Responsibly, fiscally, fiscally responsible, and I believe me that you hear from me all the time with these issues. Uh, beginning with sixty percent water loss, uh, that council was ignoring for a long time.
The. We weren't ignoring it, Mayor Protim. Don't do that. Don't do that.
The, the, um. But I don't have a number for our total legal expenses. It's not here.
Uh, two hundred thousand dollars is what was budgeted. You're asking what would have to be used?
But that's not the other Olson and Olson expenses. That's different. I've requested that too.
What does that have to do, Mayor Protim? What does that have to do with a list that shows? That council members are spending X amount of hours talking to Gus. Has nothing to do with it. Not one thing at all. This shows the total amount of hours that council members are spending having discussions. With Gus. We can get the budget information, but that, we're not going to to negate the the fact that this is, this is an issue. For me, maybe not for you. This is an issue for me.
And and I'm gonna have to disagree with a lot of this billing.
I understand that.
I mean, if you have a city, if you have my attorney email him, I'm getting billed for that. Open records, I'm being billed for that. Questions about the budget, that's going against me. I mean, what's he here for? This is, this is a bunch of nonsense right here.
Okay, all right. Well, we're gonna.
I was.
We're gonna, we're gonna let you finish that statement, Mister Lowry, and then we're gonna move over to Mister Ross. We understand your point.
I- i- it's a bunch of nonsense.
Okay, I appreciate you, Mister Ross.
So. I would suggest that you do more than the twenty hours a year. That's a little over an hour and two thirds a month. Gus, so.
That's.
If we could do, if y'all could do going forward, three hours a month. That, but add that into the city council budget. Each council person has a budget for. Professional services or whatever. And then, once you've exceeded that point, that's thirty six hours a year. Once you've exceeded that amount of money, you have to come back and ask, I need more money for professional service.
Very good. I'm, we, I'm going to entertain a motion at this time. Is the motion for twenty hours or what what? Is somebody making a motion from this side or no?
I make a motion that we cap it at twenty hours per calendar year.
Per calendar year or?
We're all gonna have to, uh, Mayor Bell.
Hold on just a minute. Uh, there's gonna be some discussion after this, Mister Lowry.
The motion is to cap it at twenty hours per fiscal year.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Is there another motion?
I'll split the difference and make a motion for twenty four hours. You're giving you a full two hours a month. To speak with the city attorney.
Is that fiscal?
Fiscal.
Fiscal year, twenty four hours. Is there a second?
I second that.
Discussion, Mister Lowry.
Each council's gonna have to see what they're being billed for, to make sure we're not being billed for open record requests or, um. Things that I've never even discussed with the city attorney that are on here. I mean, if we're being, but this is serious concerns. If we're being billed for this stuff, JB, that's, that's a serious concern to me. So we're gonna have, we're gonna have to go over this in depth, definitely.
I think any staff member notes, I, I don't like getting billed once. I definitely don't like getting billed twice, so I understand the concern on that.
Yeah.
I did have a follow up question, uh, to Mayor Protim's point. Uh, Mayor Protim, you were asking, uh, as far as the, the legal budgetary items for city attorney and. Outside legal counsel as well, were you not?
They're just total legal, illegal expenses.
Okay.
That's what I was trying to come up to with a figure.
Sure.
What the city is spending on total legal, including, you know, the staff involved in ga- in own issues. That's what I was just looking for. And then I could work things.
I'm, I'll make sure that we try to consolidate that for the next city manager's report.
Very good. I will say this, uh, doesn't matter what what the case may be, uh, if if a council person exceeds their hours and there is a. Just reason to access the attorney, that just reason can be put on a public agenda. And three of us can vote in the affirmative to give that council member more access. And so this is not cutting off access. Let's not get that story started. This is. Monitoring access. We have to be able to monitor access. All five people up here represent a constituency. Four of them represent constituencies. That are equal in population. It is not fair whether it is, uh, whether it is an earnest effort. Or whether it is, uh, a sincere effort, uh, it is not fair that one district. Over another district has more time with our attorney. That's just simply not fair, right? If it were fair, if it would be fair for anyone, it would be the mayor. Why? Because the mayor has all four districts as a constituency, the mayor deals with contracts with Gus. And the agenda with Ms. Nance, Mister Pritchett, and with Gus. But. All of us should be limited to twenty four hours. That's what I heard. And I don't have any issue with it. I'm calling for the question. All those in favor? Ah, any opposed? All right, three to two. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Let's move on. Seven two, ARPA.
Oh, it's just looking at. Talk to Gus after.
Okay, all right. You're gonna handle that afterwards. Thank you. Seven two, ARPA.
Number. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Number, uh, two, two, three, two, bid award for L M twenty four dash seventeen. Approving the purchase of two Caterpillar three oh three point five mini excavators. From Mustang Cat utilizing allocated ARPA funds in the amount of one hundred twenty five thousand, two hundred sixty six dollars. from Mustang Cat utilizing allocated ARPA funds in the amount of one hundred twenty-five thousand, two hundred sixty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents. And this was a holdover from last meeting.
Yes, sir.
Sounds like we got it straight. Is that right?
So we, uh, when Amanda got back from vacation, she could let John know I hounded her. We, uh, took a deep dive into this and we actually found that it's not just RB Everett that was disqualified. It was both ASCO and King Ranch. The reason for this is that RB Everett, uh, fell to, uh, uh, give us their references. There were three references required by the RFP that was not given to us. Both ASCO and King Ranch failed to give us their certificate of liability, which was required by the, uh, RFP. Um, so at this moment, we have two, two choices we could do. We could move forward with the purchase with through Mustang Cat. Um, we could go out for a rebid, which is a cost on that. Uh, there is the unknown of if these prices are gonna be held. We could get it lower. We could get hired. Um, these original contracts will not be held up if we do decide to do that. Um, so that's, uh, where we're at.
Very good. I believe it was you, Mayor Protem, that had the, uh, most questions about the, the, uh, those disqualifying. So did you, are you, uh, how are you feeling about?
But thanks for clarifying that. Well, and that comes back, Amanda, and we've gone this, there was a changeover at one point. And I don't know why. I don't know if it was public service. I was one of the reviewers at one time, uh, and maybe they didn't like me as a reviewer because I was, you know, picky as I am, right? But then I didn't hear anything more. But, uh, I just always want to go with the form. And one of the things that I saw in terms of, as I looked over the documents that you provided, like at the very end, and, um, to make me feel comfortable, the, the final report on bids was unsigned. It was, and then one of the entries was in different ink. Those kind of bring up questions, right? Why are all these in the same? And then the last entry was in a different ink. Uh, but I always like to see for, for things that are crisp, an acknowledgement at the end of a bid, of a bid. Uh, I hereby acknowledge that these, this information is true, accurate and complete and represents something along those lines. Gus, you know what I'm talking about. So an acknowledgement that the information is too accurate and complete and, uh, in terms of presenting it to us. That's number one. I did see all those items, right? The references on those other ones didn't, weren't complete. One of the things in terms of the schedule, of the, of the, um, the point system, which, which, I, once again, I brought this up up here before, well, when I first came on council, is the question with regard to the warranties. What's the useful life? But in terms of equipment, I look at it as if I'm buying like a car. What's the first question I ask? What's the warranty that I have? Is it unlimited? And the only one that I saw in all the documents that were provided, and I don't know if it's one of the entities that, that is now disqualified that you're saying, but is the one for the John Deere, uh, equipment, which we already have, correct? We use John Deere in our zero-turn mowers, uh, is, is what I was looking on this. By the way, the past budgets is where I saw them on that side. So, um, apparently they're, they're serviced well. But that's the, that was something that was not given any points on. And I would, I would ask that if we acquire any equipment, that we make sure that we get warranties with regard to the equipment. The John Deere warranty was for a five-year period on, on that side. And then the other question that I had was, um, we don't have a, a mini excavator right now?
We have one.
We have one.
Two thousand twelve. It's in the shop right now. It, it's falling apart.
Okay, okay. So is that, is, well, that's a, I guess that's finance. As I'm looking to, the, the, we've got some items that are listed here and under public works as assets and amortized one over a ten-year period, another over a five-year period, but it doesn't indicate what they are. And I've also asked for an asset list in the past and I've never seen one, so I don't know on that side. But those are the questions that I have. And you've, you've helped clarify, but, but I would ask that we make sure there's a warranty on, on our equipment that we purchase.
Let, let me ask you this, Mayor Protem, before we proceed. Are you willing to act on this tonight?
I'll, I'll defer to council. I mean, I, they answer my questions. That's what I was looking for, answering the questions, right? And, and, and affirmation from you, Ms. Hobby, that, that the, the two that remain are in fact accurate and they, they responded in a complete fashion and that there's a warranty as well.
So all of them had warranties. Every, every bid that we received, we received four bids. There's only one qualifying bid available. That's it.
Now, there's only one.
And that's Mustang Cat.
Is that, is, is?
Two, two, so RB Everett did not provide references as they were told.
Yeah.
Uh, ASCO and King Ranch did not provide certificates of liability. They were required to do so. There's only one qualifying bidder.
There were five. Were there five that responded?
RB Everett had.
Oh, RB Everett.
Yes, sir.
Oh, they did a cabin and a canopy.
There was a third, yeah.
Cabin canopy, yes, sir.
Yeah, what about them?
RB Everett bid twice and then King Ranch and ASCO. They were all disqualified.
You said King Ranch, uh, Ms. Amanda, you said King Ranch didn't provide what?
They did certificate of liability, insurance, yes, sir. Them and ASCO. Neither one of them provided it.
Just, just for all of our knowledge, when, when we put out, uh, an RFP and folks respond to it, but they lack information. And this is just totally a question, uh, you know, so that we can get edified. Do we at any point contact them back to say, you've submitted a bid, but you are lacking A, B, and RC? We do that?
After we do queue them. Yes, sir.
After you de queued it?
Yes.
And we've never, which again, doesn't matter to me, just curious.
So I think one of the things that we need to understand is, you know, for that bidding process, one of the things that we cannot do when we have a bidding process, especially for equipment, especially when it comes to, uh, other contractors, you know, for public works. We're talking about public works, so my brain's gonna be on public works. If you have a contractor to come out and remove one of those clay pipes that we often have talked about recently that are infrastructure or, or equipment or something like that, and you have someone bid uh, in for that, we want to make sure that if we receive an incomplete bid, that we are not providing an, in, uh, an unfair advantage by saying, um, Mr. Lowery, we got your bid. Mr. Campion, we got your bid. Ms. Yancey, we got your bid. Mayor, we got your bid. Mr. Ross is coming up. We want to let you know, I've got it from all of your, we don't handle that.
Gotcha.
And so during that bidding process, there are, um, I guess, common practices to make sure that we are kind of staying within, staying out of the gutter when it comes to bowling.
So reminding one for all of our edification. So reminding one would then make uh, a disadvantage for the other one that, that complied one hundred percent.
Correct.
Got you.
Now, there are certain times that we have to ask, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you all off, but there were certain times that we may have to uh, ask for additional documentation with bidding process as a whole. I don't know if that happened on this bid specifically. I wasn't involved in this bid specifically. But in that bidding process, there are ways to, for us to require or ask for required documentation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. See, I'm sorry, Ms. Pritchett, what you doing?
Yes, sir.
See, so what, I think what sounds like, if I might say this, Mayor Protem, one of the concerns that he has, and I, I can, I tend to agree with him, is there is a sheet. Could you show me?
Checklist.
It's the, it's the bid tabulation.
And on the bid tabulation, it has the names of the bidders and it has, is the bid complete? Yes or no? And those that were disqualified, I see you raising your hand, Ms. Nance. Those that were disqualified, there is an answer of yes on Everett, on two Evreets. King Ranch is a question mark, but Everett's is yes. So that, that kind of throws us off because we're not familiar with what happened with the process. I'm gonna let, I thought you were raising your hand, yes? Ms. Nance will speak and then Ms. Amanda, I'll come back to you.
Okay, I just, because my office is involved in that particular, in the opening part. So I first wanted to say that we do all sealed bids. Um, those bids are not open until, it's usually on a Wednesday. If the due date is Wednesday at ten AM, we come in here at ten fifteen and we open, we do public openings. Before that, we have no idea what is in there to be able to tell someone, yes, you received, yes, you didn't. We don't know how many. We don't open the website or anything as long. So, um, when you get to those bid tabulations, those are typically done in this room as somebody is peeling them, opening them, reading through them. So that's kind of like just the first glance at it. That's, those happen before the information is verified. Does that make sense?
So this tabulation sheet happens initially.
Yes, sir.
Before the other information is verified.
Yes. So that is just, is the information in, when I open the packet, is there a page that has words on it that says these things? Yes. And then after that part is done, because it's a public opening, after that part is done, it's take, it's given to the department and they go through and they do the verification process. So you, you could possibly get de queued in the beginning because you didn't have anything or you had a no bid or whatever. Or you could get disqualified after the fact, once they do the verification checks.
Perfectly fine. I think though, that if that's how we're doing it, I think that we need to probably change this sheet. The bid complete, maybe that column might need to say something different. Right? So that, because I, I can see Mayor Protem's point. We're looking at it. We don't know. I couldn't even tell you what a mini excavator was, Amanda. You know that about me. So we don't have any information other than what we're seeing on the screen.
Right.
Right? So it would be helpful if we might, Ms. Nance, uh, change that column so that it can say something to the fact that it was accepted, received and forwarded. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, we can make those changes on the floor.
Sure. Ms. Amanda, I said I was coming back to you.
I just wanted to say, to be fair, um, in the ARPA bids that we sent out, we sent out, uh, specifications and requirements, um, for warranty, uh, what we were looking for, standard product, but every bid packet that was sent out had a checklist, to be fair. So everybody knew what they were required to turn in at the time of bid.
Yeah, yeah. And when I, when, when, when JB said it, and we're gonna, we're gonna go at this about another three minutes, Gus, when JB said it, it made sense. It would be unfair to call somebody and say, you missed this or you missed that when the other companies are doing exactly what they were asked to do. I do get that point. Mayor Protem?
And, and by the way, I understand, uh, being a grantor of things, if you haven't submitted the terms of responding to the grant, you're out, period, by the timeframe. If you come in at five oh one and the deadline was five, you missed it. So I understand that.
Yeah.
And on that time. But here's the question, as I was looking at this. Uh, we have, the Houston Galveston Area Council has a procurement, um, what do you call it? Division?
Division.
Procurement division. Um, did we look at that or did we contact them? Because that's basically.
Not for a bid.
Sorry?
Not for a bid.
Well, I'm just saying that, that it's, uh, it's an exception under the bidding process if you use that that, uh, joint procurement entity.
I, and, and they're not here, so I'm hesitant to put words into their mouth, but I believe the city wishes to use ARPA funds for this. So they're having to comply with the ARPA expenditure guidelines. And while HGAC would be under standard city funds is an exception, I do not believe it qualifies under the ARPA expenditures.
So, so.
At least that's the guidance the city receives.
Public safety item that fell under ARPA and it was the only one where the HGAC procurement aligned enough. And I think it was sole sourced it. Like in my memory, it's fire department and it was a sole source and that's the only reason why it worked for both. But because the ARPA has much more strenuous, as all the department heads will say, uh, because of the federal procurement. I mean, it, there are things with HGAC that just didn't line up. I think you.
Alright, thanks.
Um, Mr. Lowery?
Couple of things. Uh, it is the most expensive piece of machinery. I went through it and I, and I looked at everything, uh, the list price on all the machines that were quoted were actually less than what was listed online. So every manufacturer was giving us a substantial discount except for the one that we picked. They were actually over what the list price is by several thousand dollars, which I thought was odd. Um, another thing, legal standpoint, uh, it's a nine thousand two hundred pound piece of equipment.
Of what? I'm sorry.
It's a nine thousand two hundred pound piece of equipment. You gotta factor the weight of the trailer and also the weight of the vehicle to make sure you're not required to have a Class ACL to tow it.
We're very well aware of that.
Very good. Let's, uh, let's call for a question. Whoa, we need a motion. Is that right? We're in a motion? We, uh, I will entertain a motion. There's, there it is from Mayor Protem. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Here, no, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven-three, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Seven-three, boards and commissions, appointing, reappointing and or removing members of boards, commissions and committees. If there are no special instructions, Ms. Nance, we will, uh, uh, open the floor to, uh, nominations for boards and committees from council. Does any council member have a board or committee appointment tonight?
I have.
Mayor Protem?
Well, first is a comment. I, as I asked, working with the city secretary's office, when we amended the applications for boards and commissions and I went, this is back when I first joined Marion, we did that. I think Jira was still our city attorney at that point because I worked with her when I was looking at that. There was an application that was included and, um, it asked, and there was some certain certifications that the person lived in the city of Lamarck and things of that nature. We still have that particular one there, but there was some other things about, um, uh, question of, um, whether you had any sort of, since we work with some of our commissions with children and things of that nature, whether you were committed some felony of some sort. There was, there was an original and, and you weren't, I was working with Robin at that time too. She was on board, right? So our new application doesn't have any of those, those things and.
Sorry, whenever you're done.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. I got you.
And, and so I, I want to point that out to, to all my fellow council persons that I think that that's something we might come back and visit and take a look at closer on because I know that I am concerned about the fact that our Parks Board and our Keep Lamarck Beautiful, we work with children and
Yeah, absolutely.
and things of that nature. So I make that, that point. Um, number two, the, um, priority in, in terms of what I look at is also that some clarity and, um, the city of Santa Fe actually did a great job and I'm, I'm gonna work this out. I'll bring this back to council again. Making, providing a bit more clarity in terms of what the commissions do and a little bit more of the scope of work. And so if I permit it, I'd like to bring that. Um, it's on their application as well too, right? And I'd like to bring that on that side. And then, um, there, then having said all those things and I'll come back. One of the appointments that I have, and I've got the privilege of making, is to the Economic Development Board. And interestingly enough, as I was going back and looking at all the, the, the past budgets, my first question as I was looking at an appointment there was understanding the Economic Development Board. And, um, and I asked myself, if I'm looking at making an appointment there, I want to make sure that, that the person that I can explain to, what is it that the Economic Development Corporation does, what its possibilities? And, um, and folks, if, I know we don't, in our everyday lives, we're not keeping up with what's happening in, at the legislature in Austin, but there's a lot going on. And part of it is the Senate did pass a bill which probably will be passed on the House side that's no longer gonna permit, uh, cities to have quote paid lobbyists. We don't have a paid lobbyist in terms of what the cities used to do. Uh, they would hire law firms and the law firms were doing the lobbying. But what the cities do today is, except perhaps, I don't know, perhaps Gus, maybe the larger cities still hire law firms to do lobbying work. I don't know. In DC, I know.
I think, I think Harris County gets in trouble.
Well, some, some larger cities, they do their own little thing. Uh, but, um, but there is this pending. And if that happens, what's, what's gonna happen is we no longer will have uh, one of the benefits from the Texas Municipal League of having a, an entity in Austin during the session keeping up with all of the proposed legislation. And so one of us, one of us or a group of us are gonna have to find some time during these sessions to spend some time in, in Austin because they still permit us as, as volunteers to be up there doing and tracking our legislation. And having said that, there is uh, on the Economic Development Corporation side, legislation that's also impacting and may change the character of economic development corporations. And I say all that too, but making this first nomination, which is And I say all that too, by making this first nomination, which is gonna be a self nomination. I would like to nominate myself to be on the Economic Development Corporation uh during this period of transition. And um, and that's, that's bottom line. I checked with Gus, that is permitted under the. Uh, case law as well, attorney general opinion. Uh, other cities have that, right? Um, I think the Galveston.
Yeah, the city of Galveston, the majority of the, it's a different type of E D. Uh, it, it's a different tax, but the majority is, or are council members.
And, and I also say that because as I went through these budgets, I'm, I guess I, I'm trying to understand ours. Is that, one of the things that I see others doing, and that I think ultimately Lamarck, and I discussed this my previous placeholder. Council member Chris Lane, is ultimately Lamarck needs to form its own foundation. Uh, and, and or nonprofit foundation flash, because we have the opportunity to go out. And solicit more money. And we need to do that. The, 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 uh, for benefit of our parks or. Our beautification, whatever the case may be. But um, so that's, that's from nominating myself for that on that side. And then the second nomination I have is for the uh, buildings and standards, uh, Ms. Nance. And that's Ms. Carrie, um, is it Jennings Johnson? She's uh, lives up in District B. And she's a former uh, member, uh, worked. Uh, as the Department of Corrections and um, has an excellent background. She was a former twenty-four year resident of the city of Texas City and recently purchased a home in one of our new plans.
Which, which board was that, Joe?
Uh, that's the building.
Building and standards?
Building and standards, yes, sir. So those are my two nominations. I still have yet one for ordinance.
You still have one? Yeah, I think we all have one for ordinance. Yeah, I think we all have one. Any other appointments before we discuss? Uh, Mayor Proten's nominations?
Yes, I need to um, nominate uh, Shonda Woodland to the ordinance review board. Christine Linscombe to the building standards as an alternate. And I'm sorry, the first one was to which board? The ordinance review board. Um, Christine Linscombe to the building standards as an alternate. And then Jasmine Randall to the planning and zoning.
What was Ms. Linscombe's first name?
Christine.
Christine Linscombe.
Who is your?
Yes, the manager.
Your P and Z?
Um, Jasmine Randall.
Jasmine.
Jaslin.
Jaslin.
Randall, and then for planning zoning, Christine Linscombe for building standards, Shonda Woodland for ordinance review.
Okay. Hold on, Mayor Protem. Let me check the other two council members. See if they have one, and then I'll come back to you. Did you have anything?
I would like to nominate Jared Williams for the planning and zoning.
With all of these, do we have addresses, ladies and gentlemen?
M- mine's on the.
You have yours? Ms. Yancy, did you have?
I don't have that.
Okay. So we will, we will act Gus on them, uh, but. Post haste, we need addresses, yes? And then if, if they don't have them by next meeting, we will then have to deal with that.
Yes, we'll follow up tomorrow.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Ross, was that, was that it? Okay. Mr. Laurie, did you have anything? Alright, Mayor Protem, you want to?
I had a question for council member Yancy. On um, some people in A have, have expressed, I'm just wondering. Should I refer them to you or to other council? And maybe I need direct from all council. Should I set, refer them? And then if not.
If you're full? You mean if you're full?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. You can refer any of those uh, to all of us. Uh, absolutely. That will, that will work. Ms. Nance, you wanted to uh, make a comment uh, about some of the uh, things that Mayor Protem had brought up before he made his nomination. Did you want to make that comment? I see, I hear you, Ms. Yancy.
Uh, yes, it was about the background checks being taken out.
Yes.
Um, when we were creating the boards and commissions handbook, that was one of the items that I was told to take out. Um, I'm not, I know there was some discourse about it back then, and we were told to take it away. So we took it away. Um, that, and I know there were concerns about doing background checks on volunteers when. We don't do background checks on council members, I believe is the quote that was used at the time. So none of our board members have background checks currently. That's always something that you guys, it is the will of the council to remain state. So we can bring that back at a later time if you'd like.
Let's grandfather everybody in. And then from this point moving forward, bring back to council for reappointments, new appointments. Uh, new council persons running for office, reelections, just standard criminal. Uh, background, we want to check for, obviously, to Joe's point, we don't need any pedophiles or convicted. Pedophiles or anything like that around our children. We're gonna have to craft it to, to make sure that we're achieving the desired result, right? Uh, just because you have a criminal history does not mean that you cannot serve. We all understand that. But I think to Joe's point and to your point. We need to be, have a way to screen uh, so that we don't have a person, unfortunately, heaven forbid, on the parks board. Who has an issue with young people, right? So if you could bring that back to us, we will entertain it. And see if we can craft it in a way that it fits what we're trying to do. Ms. Yancy, I see you, Mr. Laurie. Ms. Yancy, and then Mr. Laurie, can we get three on the clock, Mr. uh, Enable? Yes.
No, I was gonna express to councilman Compyon that um, there is an application process that you can have them fill out. So then we can pick from that application process. Normally, it's with the city secretary. But, but, but you can give them to me. Uh, they're from District A. But we can nominate anyone from any district.
Mr. Laurie.
Um, with the uh, with the uh, boards, there was something in there last time I remember about residency too. To get rid of the citizens, the people that were not living in the, in the city on all the, the boards.
And I think, I think we're in the process of that, right? Those that. I think he resigned. He resigned. Yeah, he was in.
And FYI, Mayor, as I said to you before, we did see in, in the applications that were sent over to me. Uh, one of the individuals in there was a resident of Texas City. So I just ask.
You should, absolutely, absolutely. Um, so. Mayor Protem, I, I believe we're gonna, we're gonna get a second. Uh, let me say this. Uh, let me wait for a second. Do we have a second on Mayor Protem's nominations? Uh, Councilwoman Yancy's nominations, as well as uh, Councilmember Ross's nomination. Is there a second?
A second.
Let's, let's uh, 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 we don't have to discuss. I think the, the discussion has been back and forth. But I wanted to say this to you, Mayor Protem. Uh, normally, normally I would say that. Uh, the, when, when we appoint ourselves uh, to a vo- as a voting member of a board or a commission. We are uh, taking an opportunity away from uh, a person. Who might be able to serve in that capacity, inviting another person into our government. However, however. Uh, I, I, I'm, I'm willing to go with you on this one. Um, so that we can get a, a, a good look, at least for a year, right? Get a good look at what's happening at the E D C. Um, so that the council can become more familiar with uh, with the, the inner workings of the E D C. I am the ex officio member. I serve uh, on that board uh, without a vote. Uh, and so it works well. And so I'm willing to go with you at least a year, let you get your hands. Uh, in the middle of it and, and bring back to council what some of those issues might be with economic development. Anyone else before we vote? Here you go. We'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? New business. Eight eleven, council, new business. We still can do this. Eight, uh, item eight, new business items presented to council for discussion and possible action. Eight, one. This ought to go fast. Resolution number letter R dash two zero two five dash zero zero one seven. Entering to a memorandum of understanding with Hitchcock's Special Response Team. I will entertain a motion.
Some motion.
There's a second?
Second.
Ba- basically what this is, chief, is our police department engaging in a memorandum of understanding. With Hitchcock's Police Department in an effort to create uh, a special response team for, between. The cities of Hitchcock and Lamarck. In essence, that's what we're doing.
That is correct.
Any discussion?
I was gonna ask if we could take eight, one and two together since they're the same.
Do you want to do that, Gus?
They're just two different cities.
Or would you want to vote on either? On both?
Do them separate. The, the, the state law requires a, a separate resolution.
Thank you for the clarification. I will call, let's call for the vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Eight, two. Resolution number letter R dash two zero two five dash zero zero one eight. Entering into a memorandum of understanding with Santa Fe Special Response Team. Uh, again, the same thing. Uh, we are trying to combine forces for a special response team to keep both cities safe. I will entertain a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Here you go. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, chief. Eight, three. Resolution number R dash two zero two five dash zero zero one nine. Suspending the proposal by Centerpoint Energy Resources Corporation, DBA Centerpoint Energy. To implement interim grip rate adjustments for gas utility investments in twenty twenty four. Gus, in thirty seconds or less, did you want to explain?
Sure. Um, Centerpoint has filed for a rate increase. Uh, this suspends that rate increase for forty-five days. The uh, estimated monthly increase would be, I, I believe, two dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Per?
Month.
Per month. And we are voting to suspend that.
Forty-five days, correct.
For forty-five days. Very good. I'll entertain a motion.
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Here you go. We'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eight, four. ARPA bid award human resources software. This is what Ms. Michaela and. Mayor Gary Carey. Brought forth to us earlier today, authorizing the city manager upon final approval of the city attorney to sign a contract with Niogo. In the amount of three hundred seventy-eight thousand, six hundred thirty-seven dollars for the provision of human resources and payroll software. I will entertain a motion.
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Did anyone want to discuss or no? I thought you said.
I would like to.
Okay.
Annual money spent out is, I mean, doing the math, we're below what our ARPA. What we approved for ARPA. So I'm, I'm good with it. I just want to know.
Ms. Nance has a handout for you guys, um.
I need one more. I'm sorry, Michaela, go ahead.
Um, so this is the breakdown for uh, the annual breakdown for the uh, software. Um, that we were given um, in the R F P process. Um, I know Councilman Ross had some questions about that, as well as Mayor Protem Compyon. So I want to split that in front of you guys. Um, if you have any questions for either Gary as to uh, what these prices are, or either for me as far as budgeting.
Did you uh, get your question answered, Mr. Ross? Are you getting it answered right now?
Doing the math.
Led you peruse. Uh, Mayor Protem, did you want to?
Two, two things. Number one, and Gus, Gus really bored with this one. But, but um. On, on the um, score sheet, I'd once again ask that we tighten that up, get some acknowledgement and. Uh, that, that, that we have a signed person's name on there, so that if we have any questions, we can go back and. Track and ask that question. There's no name here. And um, the um, other thing, just, I just noticed this on this. Handout. What does, who's, who's the candidate when it says candidate text messaging subscription? Candidate text messaging setup. Is that an, a, a, a candidate for office or a candidate for employment?
Candidate for employment. So we could text them if they, um, like say we call and they're currently working a position. Then we can text them and say, hey, are you still interested in this position? Um, if so, because. People get robo calls, it's twenty twenty-five. I mean, so it's easier to text and actually get a response from people.
And what's so special about you guys charging us eight hundred or. Seven, almost seven hundred for that particular service, different years. Says candidate text messaging subscription, six sixty-four. Candidate text messaging subscription in year two, eight fifty-four. Sorry?
Maintaining that software, there's a cost, says to maintain that. It's not just something that's necessarily the fault. It's a part of the software, and there's actually things that you do within the software that trigger that. But then also for the candidates, people text information back to Michaela, the HR.
Software maintenance. This is not, uh, every time we send a text, we get charged two dollars. This is, this is the overall software maintenance is what you're saying. And it sounds like what you're saying is that this software will enable us. To communicate on different levels with uh, prospective candidates, even to their phone, which is where most people. Uh, that's the nerve center of, of most people's lives is their phone. Got you, got you. Anyone else? Mayor Protem, I'm sorry, will you finish?
No, that's a fix.
Anyone else?
No, and, and keeping up with HR, you know that most people don't do the phone call, they do text.
Ms. Nance, do we have a motion?
Yes, I would just.
In a second, we, so we're waiting on the vote. Let's call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Eight, five. Westwood subdivision pavement and drainage improvements, change order number three. Change order number three for the Westwood subdivision pavement and drainage improvements project. Submitted by Attico in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred ninety, nine hundred thirty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. In thirty seconds or less, Mr. Shannon, what is this twenty-seven thousand dollars about?
So it's to just replace a hundred twenty-one point five linear feet of damage curve. It's to uh, replace a hundred ninety square feet of dis- of pavement. Uh, it's just been doing the finish touches to that project out there. Uh, the, it's pretty much complete. Uh, they just, uh, when they were replacing or doing that stormwater system out there, they did damage to curves and.
Sure.
It's just uh, fixing that damage.
Understood. I will entertain a motion.
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Here you go. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eight, six. Mid-year financial retreat, scheduling a mid-year financial retreat. In preparation for the twenty twenty-five budget amendment, council, that means us. And so they are asking us to retreat. To somewhere luxurious.
Yeah, let's go to Brazil.
Let's go to Hawaii.
Second.
In, in all seriousness, they are asking us to retreat. Uh, did y'all have any, on y'all's wish list, any days? Is there, is it going to be one day, four hours, six hours?
Uh, obviously, I met the will of council. Uh, my hope is for us to, the way that we. Much did, that I was part of the council retreat uh, during budget season, or before budget season. Had, had finished last year. But if we can knock this out in one day, really the intent behind it. Is for us to look at options for a budget amendment for this year, to give you reporting. Uh, on much of the things you've asked. I know Councilman Ross has asked ARPA grants, Mayor Protem asked legal fees and all the above. But it's really the fine tuning of uh, budget amendment, uh, or fine tuning of operations with council. Before a budget amendment. And since we have already kicked off budget meetings for FY twenty-six internally. We wanted to make sure that we're at least having touch points with council for, for this. So if we could do one day, I think that we can, I, I, I said twenty words, one, two, we'll do. One day. If we can do one day, about four to five hours, I think that we can chew through a lot of it.
So we just, did you want to add, Ms. Nance?
Oh, I was just gonna say, if possible, um, because ordinance, the meeting where you look at ordinances will be April fourteenth, if we could do it.
Before then?
Yeah.
Alright, so let's see, let's see if it's okay for the council to start at ten AM. Any objections?
On the fourteen?
Uh, we, I was just getting parameters. Ten AM to four PM? Would that be good, council?
That's fine.
Okay, so now that we got that, what was it, what was it, April the fourteenth is what you're saying? Is the meeting?
April the fourteenth is the next council.
Okay, so council, we have between now and April fourteenth to carve out. A ten to four. Who's busy the first Tuesday in April? I just threw that out there.
April first.
That's April fools. We don't want to do that. Let's try something else, right? Who's do, who's busy the se- the second Tuesday in April?
Second Tuesday.
April eighth. Who's busy April eighth? I might be busy April eighth. Who are you talking about?
My two days open at that week are the eighth, the eighth and the eleventh.
Look at that. Look, look, look at that. Look at those great minds.
But eighth and eleventh through.
Look at those great minds, Joe. If you are free, and then I'm free, those are two. Great minds, free on one day. We can save the world, Joe. Are you free April eighth? Ms. Yancy's free? Ms. Nancy's free? Mr. Ross, are you free?
Yeah.
You're gonna be, Mr. Ross said he's gonna be free. Mr. Laurie, are you free?
Yes, sir.
That would be April eighth from ten to four.
Okay.
All right, I will entertain a motion.
I'm sorry, is that a workshop or a meeting?
It's gonna be a retreat and it won't be here. The purpose of retreats, ladies and gentlemen, is for us to get away from the city council, the city administration, uh, city hall, so that we can focus on a specific task. So it won't be here. It will be somewhere, I believe in Lamarck at this point. And, and so we'll retreat to that location. I think you're working on a few locations.
I just needed a date.
All right. So April eighth, uh, from ten AM to four PM. I will entertain that motion. Kiera will give us the particulars on location and the rest of the stuff that we would need to know.
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Here you go. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Eight. Okay. Eight, oh, nine. There it is. City manager's report. Look at that. Eight twenty-three. City manager's report, submitted report to update council and community on standard operation of the city. Report can be acknowledged as a whole or discussed at the pleasure of council. As always, council, I am going to read nine one through nine six. If you would like to discuss, just let me know. Nine one, ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act, City Department expenditures update. That's one. Nine two, citywide manhole rehab.
I'd like to.
You like that one? That would be Compey on. Nine three, February municipal court, February, excuse me, two thousand twenty-five municipal court stats. Nine four, February two thousand twenty-five stormwater report. Nine five, February twenty twenty-five water loss report.
I'd like to tag that one.
You want that one too, Compey on?
Yes, sir.
Nine six, uh, March twenty twenty-five Economic Development Corporation report.
Call that, call that.
That's Ms. Nancy. And then good of the order is Mr. Pritchett. So let's start over. Let's start with, uh, three minutes on each one of these. Ms. Nance and ARPA and Mr. Ross, go.
All right. I just, I want to know what we've actually spent. We have a lot of, a lot of money here that is in limbo and people want to know what we have spent out there. Because we get grants for your, for the whole cameras out at Walmart and stuff, but we had allocated money for ARPA. So kinda confused on where the money's actually being spent at right now. We don't want to give any money back.
We're not planning on giving any money back for sure. Uh, the, to some of those, to some of those points, some of the items that were put up were those specific items, however, because they were covered on other grant funds that, uh, that prevented us from locking that in, uh, with those MOUs that my predecessor had set through at the end of December. And so what those MOUs do is they lock in those amounts of money to public works, administration, finance, or I'm sorry, administration, uh, fire and so on and so forth. And so where you see the report in front of you happens to do with everything that was included with those allocations uh, that were set forth then in December. So if you're asking how much we have spent to date of the ARPA funds, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Okay. I will do some simple math for you. I will let you know that the, as far as the reports go, if you look at the, the, the services as far as the project IDs, we can go through two, 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 three, which is the financial software replacement, the seven twenty-one that has, uh, been voted upon. The mini excavators, two, two, three, two is what you, what, what we discussed earlier this evening. The street repair, two, two, three, six is the, the Jefferson Street, Cedar Road, Lake Road in the city of Lamarck to do the, the maintaining of, of that. That bit amount was higher. And so where we paid for a portion of those was ARPA funds in the amount of four hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents of ARPA monies. Um, the project two, two, four, one, which is the fire bunker gear, was paid for uh, partially out of additional grant fundings as well. So I will have to nail down the exact amount, if any, had been purchased from ARPA thus far. I think what we are doing as far as staff goes to Mayor Protem's point is the report that we have to disperse this next upcoming month shows that when you add all of this together, that we are over budget when it comes to ARPA. So we're already looking at things to limit when it comes to these ARPA guidelines. A lot of those are not things that we're looking to eliminate, but they are things that we have eliminated from ARPA due to being, what I would say is ferocious when it comes to, to other grant fundings. If you remember catalytic converter grant, Lone Star Grant, some of those equipment that they provide to police and fire are reasons why our ARPA money, uh, budget has gone down as well. If you look at the stretchers, two, two, four, eight, and, and I'm just, two, two, four, six, pardon me, uh, as we, as we're looking down those items, that was the item Mayor Protem that I talked about was uh, specifically sole sourced and that's that one thirty-two. Uh, if we're looking at the, the additional, um, fire equipment as well, I'm sorry. Correct. Were you questioning that one or were you just moving forward?
You skipped it.
Yes, sir. So those thermal imagers were purchased. Uh, they were not purchased from this ARPA line item. So that's something that, uh, most likely came out of our, uh, yes. So, but as we continue to move through here, the other equipment, specifically the, uh, defibrillators, the AEDs, uh, is another item that we, we have finalized through here, uh, including the life packs, which is two, two, five, zero. The ambulance remounts, two, two, five, one as well. And then the tools, uh, for fire, AKA jaws of life, moving from that two, four, six, four, which are gonna be, if you notice, the projects go from two, two numbers to two, four numbers. So that's gonna be, those are the most updated aspects of ARPA. So the asphalt roller, the pothole trip, patch trailer, um, the utility client software that we have talked about, all of those purchases have gone through. If you want a set dollar amount of how much that we have left, if you go to that top page, uh, Councilman Ross, we're of the four point two. We are, I don't want to give you a, a false estimate, but we are looking at having bids completed for about ninety percent of everything on here. Uh, with the, all the bids that have gone through, I believe have all been awarded minus one at this point. So we have a few more bids that need to go out in the next sixty days to which Ms. Nance and her staff have those all, all prepared to, to go. A lot of that is having to work with Shannon and Amanda for things such as this, mini excavator to make sure that they're graded, they're done. A lot of those bids have gone out and they're graded and we're just getting to the finalization point to make sure that we can bring those to council to award them. Uh, the total amounts expended, I will get for you if you're looking at that, but a rough estimate that we're looking at, I would say just shy of three million.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, this clock is here for a reason. When we hear the time go, we have to be cognizant. I am getting inundated by people telling us our meetings are too long. So when we make the effort to put time limits on, let's make sure that we are bringing these items into general terms, into really, really concise efforts because the people are wanting us to continue and finish the business before nine o'clock if we can. Mr. Ross, did you get all your questions answered?
I got, I got everything.
All right. Thank you. Now we're on item nine, two, three minutes, Ms. Nance. That's, uh, Mayor Protem, Compey on.
Sure. I, I don't, I don't need an answer. I, I want to point this out. The, going back the previous year's budgets and Shannon, I want to work with you and probably finance and probably Dim as well too. I want to track. I keep seeing, um, the, both the lift stations and the, um, what do you call them? The manhole cover rehabs. There, at, at various times, there's money that's been allocated in previous years for manhole repairs, right? And then the, the, we just approved the Water Development Board monies, which were what? For manholes as well too. So are, are, I want to get clarity. Are we repeating? Are we doing work over? You know, so I want to track all of this because we may have money that's can be reallocated as we get to budget. And so that's all my, my comment there.
Yes, sir.
I was just gonna say that, uh, the reason why there's money left over is when they went out and started working on these manholes, there were some that had already been completed. They didn't have to do that work and they just moved on to the next.
And to this point of Mayor Protem's item, this was a change order to this project. We're doing more work for the, and to stay under budget. So the only change order is there's no additional monies that this will cost the city, but we wanted to bring it before y'all as well as the general public for this change order specifically. We're just doing additional manholes because we have more than enough money. So we want to make sure that we provide that service.
And, and all I'm asking is let's make sure we're allocate, right? Because like I said, this goes back to twenty, what is this? I can't see my glasses, twenty nineteen. And, and, uh, track these. And also, as work is completed on manholes, please, somewhere, we need this in the cloud someplace. People could look completed. It's good for fifty years or whatever, right? And, and we're not gonna worry about that for fifty years. We're gonna, we're very negligent in that regard too. All right. So.
Are manholes on our GIS system that they are? Yeah. For sure. I know it's not public right now.
Eventually we'll be able to click on manhole, find out when it was last worked on.
Yeah. So to your point, Mayor Protem, I want, we built that into the GIS system. I know it's not live yet, but specifically we worked with engineering so we could click on it and say it was last twenty twenty-four of April when this was touched. Yes, sir.
That's all.
Thank you. Um, we, we're gonna move on now to nine, five. But let me say this, since we are having a retreat, really quickly, since we are having a retreated, a retreat, uh, Mr. Pritchett, you and Ms. Turner. I would like, Mr. Pritchett, saying this to you, I would like for us to provide for the council and the community a mid-year financial report so that it can be viewable by our community members, uh, as well as this council, so that we can all be on the same page as we move into this new budget season. Item nine, five, February twenty twenty-five water loss report, Mr. Compey on, Ms. Nance, three minutes, please.
And once again, no, we're, we're making great progress. I, I think I sent to you, Kiera, but, um, I've, you know, so many emails and stuff, but I'll resend. There is a report that I would like for you to share with all of council. It's from the Agriculture Commissioner and he talks about now where thirty percent used to be good, it's not gonna cut it because of the water challenges for the entire state of Texas. And he also speaks of one thing that Councilmember Ross has been very, very articulate and passionate about is how we can utilize, I guess the term is gray water. The gray water to do our lawn, lawn and other things. He's actually encouraging that and the state under this legislative session is looking at incentives to cities to do that sort of stuff. So I'll get that email to you, Kiera, and make sure that if you could share it with council and, and staff as well too. Because we may be in, in Austin testifying to say, keep going on it, Mr. Agriculture Commissioner. We don't grow corn here, but we have water that we need. So, um, and that's all, that's all I had there, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, item nine, five, uh, March twenty twenty-five Economic Development Corporation report, Ms. Nancy. Three minutes, Ms. Nance.
Oh, I just wanted to, um, he's not here today though.
No, ma'am, he's not. I was looking as well.
Yeah, I'll defer.
You defer till, till next time.
I'm so sorry. Um, he, if you're looking for Mr. Getty, he will be here to do a presentation for the council at the April twenty-eighth meeting. He will be out of town at the next meeting, but he will be here on April twenty-eighth.
Okay.
So do you want this or an updated report at that meeting? So, okay, thank you.
Very good. Now we're at item nine, seven, uh, items for the good of the order. Ms. Nance, three minutes. Mr. Pritchett.
Absolutely. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, talk to everybody. Uh, this upcoming weekend, March twenty-ninth is our trash bash. It's gonna be out at Highland Bayou Park. Please come out, uh, sign up your group, bring your kids, bring your sorority fraternity group, church group, needlepoint group, anybody, uh, but to beautify our bayou. Uh, moving forward on April twelfth at uh, Mac McGaffey Highland Bayou Park will be the Easter egg hunt put on by our fire department. And that is going, uh, to be, as displayed on your screen, all of the details are there. Uh, please, i- if you want to be involved with this any way, shape or form, reach out to our Fire Marshal's office so that you can, uh, be more closely involved. Continuing on, April twenty-sixth is KLMBC's spring cleanup that is going to be held at the parking lot of our ABC buildings uh, over, uh, across town on Texas Avenue. And that will be, uh, from about mid-morning to about mid-afternoon. It is also my pleasure to inform you that we are having our senior safety summit, April twenty-ninth. And what that will be is leading us into a continuation of our senior safety summit from last year, uh, a partnership with Eyes on the Mark as far as our, uh, Safe City Initiative, but also hurricane season for our seniors, uh, in order to keep them safe. So please mark your calendars for those items. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Don't we have in April, the Hurricane Huddle? Is that in April or May?
That most likely will be in May because we were having a senior safety summit at the very end of April. That's gonna, that's gonna first be, uh, our, our soft launch of Hurricane Huddle, but it's typically the first few weeks of May.
I just saw that listed as April at the Parks Board and it was listed as an April event.
Okay.
Just FYI.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Council, uh, we are now, uh, moving into item ten, executive session. The City Council for the City of Lamarck, Texas reserves the right to adjourn it to executive session at any time during this meeting to discuss any ma- any of the matters listed as authorized by Texas Government Code, section five, five, one dot zero, seven, one, consultation with attorney, five, five, one dot zero, seven, two, deliberations about real property, five, five, one dot zero, seven, three, deliberations about gifts and donations, five, five, one dot zero, seven, four, personnel matters, five, five, one dot zero, seven, six, deliberations about security devices, five, five, one dot zero, eight, seven, economic development. Uh, we are moving into executive session, uh, to discuss ten, one, section five, five, one dot zero, seven, one, consultation with attorney regarding the collective bargaining agreement with the Lamarck Police Association, ten, two, section five, five, one dot zero, seven, one, consultation with attorney regarding the collective bargaining agreement with the firefighters union, local three, thirty-two, eighty-two, International Association of Firefighters, ten, three, section five, five, one dot zero, seven, four, personnel matter for the purpose of hearing of the plan of charge against an officer or an employee, Councilmember District C. We are recessing with time, with a timer tonight. We won't be back all night. I promise you that. Uh, and we are recessing at?
Eight forty.
Eight?
Eight forty-one.
Eight forty-one.
We are back from executive session. Item 11, actions to be taken from executive session 11-1. Section 551, excuse me, what time are we back?
9:13.
There it is. 11-1, section 551.071, consultation with attorney regarding the collective bargaining agreement with the Lamarck Police Association. And let's do both. 11-2, section 551.071, consultation with attorney regarding the collective bargaining agreement with firefighters' union, Local 3282, International Association of Firefighters. I believe there is no action to be taken tonight.
No.
Information purposes only.
Correct.
Now, we are moving to item 11-3, section 551.074, personnel matter for the purpose of hearing a complaint or charge against an officer or employee, councilmember District C. I will entertain a motion.
I am making a motion to censure Joseph Lowery based upon his communications on March 17th to the Public Safety Building Commission. It was uncalled for, out of line, and to say that the fine officers don't deserve a new police station until all the corrupt, and I'll put that in air quotes, politicians are gone from the city is not what a member of this council should do.
Very good. Any other motions?
I second that. Motion to censor.
Are there any other censures tonight?
No, ma'am. I would like to speak if that's okay.
Yeah, flows off.
To our beloved citizens of Lamarck, we are doing our best to, I want you to look to see who's here and who's not here. Diplomacy and sitting down and talking and requesting professionalism should not be something that you have to ask for. The citizens of Lamarck have asked persons to represent them in a professional way, in a dignified way. And it's absurd, some of the things that we have seen. And so, we are attempting to govern ourselves so that we can represent this city in a professional way. It is important that we have guardrails up, that calling a woman, an American woman, the C-word, or the P-word, or the B-word that you sit with is unacceptable. Whether it be on social media, whether it be on the dais, and this time it was done on both. This is not a standard that I think that we should accept in our city, and it's definitely not a legacy that we want to have in our city that the council people continue to disrespect one another. That I wouldn't do that to anyone on this council. We should not. And my constituency is tired. District A is tired. They have texted me, they have called me, and other citizens, mayor and council from other districts are tired as well. And so, please, contact your representative, contact the mayor, contact the city manager, email. There has to be a standard, and so that is what we're trying to do. I do apologize for our councilman Lowery's behavior. It is not the American way. That is not what we do. It is embarrassing to this city, and I, as a Lamarck resident, I'm not going to stand for it. And I'm not going to let another councilperson make it seem like it's okay. When you say nothing, your silence is acceptance, and you and you have to deal with the challenge. Our mayor pro tem should be in his seat. He's a mayor pro tem. He's supposed to bring us together and keep us together, but instead he continually walks out. That is not acceptable. You are mayor pro tem because we have asked you to be. Now, if it's okay for us to call each other out of our names, then all of us should be able to do that. This is a time for bold leadership and being able to govern and say enough is enough, and that's what we're saying tonight. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Yancey. Mr. Ross?
I've said my piece.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. The censure question happened last Monday. The issue happened last Monday at a public safety building meeting. What many of our committee members had to endure was Mr. Lowery showing up unannounced, uninvited, placing information at the seats of committee members. This information contained, I believe, campaign finance information. People were donating monies legally, let me speak for myself, and Ms. Yancey is going to speak for herself, legally to my campaign, i.e. Mr. Jerome Carroll, legally donated monies to my campaign. I legally reported them, and I campaigned for reelection and won. There's nothing illegal about any of that. I'm sure Mr. Lowery has forwarded this information to the district attorney, to the FBI, to the Lamarck Police Department, and any other news, excuse me, any other law enforcement agency that he can get his hands on, all with the same result. There is nothing illegal that took place. I was a candidate. I received monies legally, like every other candidate, like Donald Trump, like Joseph Biden, like Greg Abbott, Ted Cruz, Colin Allred. You get it. Happens in politics, but Mr. Lowery won't let that go. When the answer to your question is always bail is bad, you start having problems with the questions because they don't fit anymore after four years. For four years, this man has harassed me and my family for four years. It just happened just this past weekend at the crawfish festival, members of my family. I had to reach out to my friend Richard to make sure that my family members were safe. Enough is enough. This person has no other goal or motive than to be on this council to create havoc and cause the downfall of Mayor Bell, Councilwoman Yancey, City Clerk Nance, City Attorney Knable, interim city manager Pritchett, councilmember Ross, and any other person that does not agree with him. He was at the Public Safety Building Committee.
We are back from executive session. Item 11, actions to be taken from executive session. 11-1, Section 551. Excuse me, what time are we back, Ms. Ness?
9:13.
There it is. 11-1, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney regarding the collective bargaining agreement with the Lamarck Police Association. And let's do both. 11-2, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney regarding the collective bargain agreement with firefighters' union, Local 3282 International Association of Firefighters. I believe there is no action to be taken tonight.
No.
Information purposes only.
Correct.
Now, we are moving to item 11-3, Section 551.074, personnel matter for the purpose of hearing a complaint or charge against an officer or employee, Councilmember District C. I will entertain a motion.
I am making a motion to censure Joseph Lowery based upon his communications on March 17th to the Public Safety Building Commission. It was uncalled for, out of line, and to say that the officers, our fine officers don't deserve a new police station until all the corrupt, and I'll put that in air quotes, politicians are gone from the city is not a, what a member of this council should do.
Very good. Any other motions?
I second that. Motion to censure.
Is there any other censures tonight?
No, ma'am. I would like to speak if that's okay.
Yeah, Ms. Ross.
To our beloved citizens of Lamarck, we are doing our best to, I want you to look to see who's here and who's not here. Diplomacy and sitting down and talking and requesting professionalism is, should not be something that you have to ask for. The citizens of Lamarck have asked persons to represent them in a professional way, in a dignified way. And it's absurd, some of the things that we have seen. And so, we are attempting to govern ourselves so that we can represent this city in a professional way. It is important that we have guardrails up, that calling a woman, an American woman, the C-word, or the P-word, or the B-word that you sit with is unacceptable, whether it be on social media, whether it be on the dais, and this time it was done on both. This is not a standard that I think that we should accept in our city, and it's definitely not a legacy that we want to have in our city that the council people continue to disrespect one another. That I wouldn't do that to anyone on this council. We should not. And my constituency is tired. District A is tired. They have texted me, they have called me, and other citizens, mayor and council, from other districts are tired as well. And so, please, contact your representative, contact the mayor, contact the city manager, email. There has to be a standard. And so, that is what we're trying to do. I do apologize for our Councilwoman Lowery's behavior. It is not the American way. That is not what we do. It is embarrassing to this city. And I, as a Lamarck resident, I'm not going to stand for it. And I'm not going to let another councilperson make it seem like it's okay. When you do, when you say nothing, your silence is acceptance. And you and you have to deal with the challenge. Our mayor pro tem should be in his seat. He's a mayor pro tem. He's supposed to bring us together and keep us together, but instead he continually walks out. That is not acceptable. You are mayor pro tem because we have asked you to be. Now, if it's okay for us to call each other out of our names, then all of us should be able to do that. This is a time for bold leadership and being able to govern and say enough is enough. And that's what we're saying tonight. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Yancey. Mr. Ross?
I've said my piece.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. The censure question happened last Monday. The issue happened last Monday at a public safety building meeting. What many of our committee members had to endure was Mr. Lowery showing up unannounced, uninvited, placing information at the seats of committee members. This information contained, I believe, campaign finance information. People were donating monies legally. Let me speak for myself, and Ms. Yancey is going to speak for herself. Legally to my campaign, i.e. Mr. Jerome Carroll, legally donated monies to my campaign. I legally reported them, and I campaigned for reelection and won. There's nothing illegal about any of that. I'm sure Mr. Lowery has forwarded this information to the district attorney, to the FBI, to the Lamarck Police Department, and any other news, excuse me, any other law enforcement agency that he can get his hands on, all with the same result. There is nothing illegal that took place. I was a candidate. I received monies legally, like every other candidate, like Donald Trump, like Joseph Biden, like Greg Abbott, Ted Cruz, Colin Allred. You get it. Happens in politics. But Mr. Lowery won't let that go. When the answer to your question is always, Bell is bad, you start having problems with the questions because they don't fit anymore after four years. For four years, this man has harassed me and my family for four years. It happened, it just happened just this past weekend at the crawfish festival, members of my family. I had to reach out to my friend Richard to make sure that my family members were safe. Enough is enough. This person has no other goal or motive than to be on this council to create havoc and cause the downfall of Mayor Bell, Councilwoman Yancey, City Clerk Nance, City Attorney Conable, Interim City Manager Pritchett, Councilmember Ross, and any other person that does not agree with him. He was at the Public Safety Building Committee meeting recommending to our committee and to the community that we should not have a public safety building, that we shouldn't pass it, that we should not provide for a new station for our police department because there's corruption in the city. Now, I haven't took one red cent from this city. I don't know if Ms. Yancey's took a red cent. I'm going to let her speak for herself. But we know what Mr. Lowery has taken from this city, $50,000 from an EDC grant application that there were some untruths on. Please stop. He goes to the Public Safety Building Committee meeting. He advocates against a police department. Do y'all remember six months earlier, he was saying, spare no expense for the police? I want to take away from other departments to give to the police. If we have to shut departments down to give more to the police, let's do that. Now, all of a sudden, he doesn't even want to give them a station. And that's the biggest thing that they need. Why? When the answer to the question is Bell is bad, it gets all twisted trying to fit that circle into a square peg. Let me say this to you. I'm the presider over this meeting, the one in here and the one back there. That means that I have to organize and coordinate with people. That means that if somebody's talking, then I have to tell you not to talk because they have the floor. That means that if you continue talking while the other person is talking, then I have to say to you, sir, I need you to be quiet. If you continue talking, I have to say to you, you're either going to be quiet or you're going to have to leave. We'll put you out of here. And if they continue to talk, well, that's just downright disrespect. Let me tell you what I will do. I will continue to be the mayor of this great city so long as God gives me power and strength and the great people of this great city desire me to be so. But what I won't do is be bullied. I won't be bullied. I won't be intimidated. I won't be treated like a child. I won't be disrespected. Enough is enough. Lamarck, I have given you four years of grace. But I am a man, and I will not allow Mr. Lowery or any other person to disrespect me or to bully me in any way, shape, or form. Can I help you? Welcome. Oh, I'm going to proceed. I will not, ma'am, I'm speaking now. I'm speaking now. If we need to remove you, we can. Okay, well, I need you to be quiet while I proceed. I need you to be quiet while I proceed. As I said, I will not allow any disrespect or any bullying to my person, to my family, and I am responsible for one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine folks up here on this dais. Not going to allow any of those folks to be disrespected at all whatsoever. There comes a point in time where every human being has to stand up and be respected. Not going to happen anymore, not on this dais. It's not going to happen anymore with this council. Now, having said that, are there any other comments from the dais?
I'm going to just say this. When you profess to be a Christian, it's about knowing the love of Christ, growing the love of Christ, and showing the love of Christ. And that's what we need to display tonight. That's what we've tried to display this entire time. Ma'am, I know you are a minister. I am a minister. JB is a minister. And we have to make sure that we exemplify that our faith and everything that we do. And we have tried to do that. But I'm asking for the citizens, I've asked this before, to continue to pray. Pray for our mayor. Pray for our staff. To our staff, I do apologize to you because this is unnecessary and it should not be happening. And, ma'am, you're right. You have showed a lot of grace. And I apologize to my councilperson who's been called horrible names. Horrible names. To our staff who's been called names, I want to apologize to you because you don't deserve that. You work hard every day, and you should not have to come to a place that has this type of hate. We have to learn to respect one another. That's what we're trying to do. We will not cave in to another form of government where we attack each other. That is not what we want. We want peace. And I'm praying that you all ask for peace, and we'll get it. This too shall pass is what my father used to always say when it came to a challenge, when it comes to challenges, this too shall pass. But I want to thank you, ma'am, and thank you, Councilwoman Ross, and even Councilwoman Joe Campion, who's done a lot in the background to help, even though I know he doesn't like a lot of this, but I don't either. I just had to bury a very close friend, and I couldn't even grieve because of things people were sending me because of what was being said from a person that's supposed to be respected. And I want to make sure that District C, which I live in, is properly represented. And that time where we're tearing people down could be time where we build our city up. And that's what I'm asking Councilwoman Lowery to do. Let's build things up. Let's stop tearing each one another down. Let's build each other up as Christ has commanded us to. Love is what love does. God is love. And all of this bickering and fighting, that is not of God. That is of the devil, period. And so, the people have asked us to do a job. Let's do it. And we can do it together. I just said in the meeting with Councilwoman Lowery for two and a half hours, we were able to get a lot done together. So I know it can be done. It can be done. And I'm asking that we get back to the basics and we behave like the adults that we are. And I do apologize to the great city of Lamarck.
Thank you, ma'am. We are now at the 12 requests and announcements, requests by mayor and councilmembers of items placed on future city council agendas. Announcements on city events, community interests, Texas Government Code 551.415. Items of community interest include, number one, expression of thanks, congratulations or condolences. Number two, information.
We have, he didn't vote. He didn't vote.
We didn't vote? Ah, let's go back. Item 11-3. The motion was to censure based on the comments made March 17th at the Public Safety Building Committee meeting. That's the motion that was seconded by Ms. Yancey. Any further discussion? Here you go. We'll call for the vote. Are those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, council. Now, we are at item 12, Requesting Announcements. Those those requesting announcements, if I can pick up, items of community interest include, I think that's where I was, expression of thanks, congratulations or condolences. Number two, information regarding holiday schedules. Number three, an honorary or salutary recognition of a public official, public employer, or other citizen, except that the discussion regarding a change in status of a person's public office or public employment is not an honorary or salutary recognition for the purposes of this subdivision. A reminder, number four, about upcoming, an upcoming event organized or sponsored by the governing body. Number five, information regarding a social, ceremonial, or community event organized or sponsored by an entity other than the governing body that was attended or scheduled to be attended by a member of the governing body or an official or employee of the municipality or county. Number six, announcements involving an imminent threat to public health and safety. The people of the municipality or county that has arisen after the posting of the agenda. Requesting announcements. Mr. Ross?
I would like to reiterate that Saturday is the trash bash. Need a lot of volunteers still. Since we are having a retreat before the next meeting, we can get the grant funding then instead of at the city council meetings and talk of budget stuff. I have been asked by multiple people if we could talk about taking comments off the city Facebook page. That way, it's just, we're putting out information. If they want to make a comment, they can share the post and put any comment they want on there. And then whatever, find out whatever we need to talk about the background checks. Because I was asked about that by.
Background checks also.
Right.
You done?
That's it.
Ms. Yancey?
JB, I know I requested that report about the policing in the area, in that block area. And I know that may take some time, but if I could get it by May 1, that'd be great. And give me that report for that. And also, I think Bayhap is traveling to Washington, D.C. in May, and I want to make sure that we have some city representation with that group that goes every year. I know we haven't in the past. So I'm just trying to see that we can get someone.
You have none?
I don't think we have. So I want to make sure that we take, send someone from the staff there. I would like to go, if possible, just to see the innovation that's coming to the area and see how we can compete with that, with the land that we do have. And it was something, oh, and again, congratulations to Lamarck boys in my district. You didn't let me take that picture. I was kind of jealous, but I let it go. Hey dude, that's in my district. Okay. I'm so excited for them, especially my former coworker, Coach Wilcox. We've gone through a lot together at Lamarck ISD, and they have really, well, it takes to the ISD now, but we met when it was Lamarck ISD, and they worked really hard to bring solidarity back to the school district. And just to see that has been, was just a blessing tonight. So thank you for acknowledging them. The other thing, I had a question, but I think I may look it up, and I think that's all I have here.
Yes, ma'am. I wanted to, again, congratulate the first responders of our community, our fire, our police, our emergency medical services team, as well as our emergency management division, which includes folks that we would normally associate with emergency services, which would be members of our public works department, members of our code enforcement department, many members of our administrative staff. But it is a very difficult thing to sacrifice yourself, to put your life on the line for another person. I can remember the days, the nights that we were asleep with heart rates at about 40, only to have two or three minutes later to be in a truck putting on bunker gear with a heart rate of 200 beats per minute. That is not good for your heart under any circumstance. So I wanted to share a sincere, heartfelt thanks, gratitude, appreciation, because it's a difficult job. And many public safety officers die before their time because of not a fire or a shooter, but because of stress and poor health that goes unnoticed unless public safety members die in the line of duty. Many times, we don't pay the respect that's due, nor do we point to the service that was rendered, that provided for the loss of life or the shortened life. And so, I wanted to humbly, again, express thanks. I know what it's like. I'm dealing with the after effects of my service, so I can only imagine what many others are dealing with as well. I wanted to say thank you to, I guess it's the BTR family, is that right? The BTR, Crawfish Throwdown, is that what it was called? It's Crawfish Throwdown. It was a tremendous Cajun throwdown. Listen, I don't eat crawfish at all, at all. And the way that my seasonal allergies work, Highland Bayou did not look good on me. But many members of my family attended the event, enjoyed the event, thought the crawfish was excellent. And so, I wanted to certainly relay job well done from my family members. Look forward to a brighter, even more robust Cajun throwdown on next year. I wanted to also remind us, Council, April 8th is our council retreat, mid-year financial retreat. Bring your pads, bring your pins. This is where a lot of the answers that we ask on a regular basis, this is where a lot of them will come from, time to get into the numbers and to understand the numbers so that we can present this mid-year snapshot of our budget to the general public so that we can get feedback. Lastly, I wanted to, again, congratulate the Lamarck High School boys basketball team. I don't know if you all heard, but one of those young men made All-State, All-Region, All-District. That young man was the Player of the Year for the Galveston County Daily News. But most importantly, that young man was on the Academic All-District team, right? Was it Academic All-District? Which means that not only is he proficient in athletics, but he's also proficient in education. And to the rest of those young people, did our heart good, did it not, to see them focus on a goal, work toward that goal, and achieve that goal. And I'm excited about Mr. Wilcox, Coach Wilcox, and what the future holds for those young men and women. And we'll see. Next year, we'll have a bigger celebration because we would have captured the state title. There's nothing else. Ms. Ness, Mr. Conable, did we get it all? Nothing else left to say? Mr. Pritchett?
That's it for me.
All right. Thank you all kindly. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is that second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. We stand adjourned.